Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the Berkeley Unified School District Board of Education held today, January the 8th, 2022. Ms. Barrios, can you please begin with your spiel?
Yes, I can. Good evening and welcome. El siguiente mensaje será repetido en español. I would like to provide a brief overview of tonight's meeting. After a few procedural items, the board will hear thirty minutes of public comment. At the end of the meeting, there will be another and final opportunity for additional public comments. So if you do not get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, you can stay and speak at the end. To participate in public comment, please raise your hand now by clicking on the Participants button at the bottom of your screen and selecting the Raise Your Hand button. To comment by phone, you'll be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. If you wait to raise your hand until the public comment period starts, you will not get to speak and you'll have to wait until the next public comment period. When called upon, you'll be promoted to a panelist. This means that you will appear on screen. If you do not wish to appear on camera, please be sure to disable your camera on your end. The board president will usually call on our students first. If you are a student who wishes to speak, please write "student" or "s" at the end of your name. The board president will determine whether to set tonight's speaking time at one, two, or three minutes per speaker. On an individual basis, she also has a discretion to allow for extra time for those who need translation or have other speech needs. There will be a timer displaying a countdown on screen alerting you when your time has elapsed. If you are still speaking, you are allowed to finish your sentence, but please try not to speak beyond your time. Thank you.
Voy a proporcionarles un resumen detallando el orden de esta reunión. Después de los procedimientos preliminares, un periodo de treinta minutos será dedicado a comentarios públicos. Al final de la junta, que usualmente puede ser cerca de las diez, habrá una segunda y última oportunidad para quienes desean participar en comentario público y parte de miembros de la audiencia que no tuvieron oportunidad de proporcionar comentario durante el primer periodo de comentario público. Para comentar por videoconferencia, a favor de levantar la mano ya haciendo clic en el botón participantes en la parte de abajo de la pantalla y selecciona el botón Levantar la mano o Raise Your Hand. Para comentar por teléfono, levanta la mano presionando estrella nueve, favor de hacerlo ya, ya que si se espera hasta el inicio del periodo de comentarios públicos, tendrá que esperar hasta el final de la reunión para participar. Usualmente, la presidenta llamará a los estudiantes primero. Por favor, escribe "estudiante" o "s" detrás o enfrente de su nombre. La presidenta de la mesa directiva outrará uno, dos, o tres minutos por orador y tiempo adicional a quienes requieren traducción o cualquier otra adacción especial. Al ser llamado, será promocionada a panelista y aparecerá en pantalla. Si no desea de hacerlo en pantalla, por favor de apagar su cámara. Verá un reloj que muestra una cuenta regresiva en la pantalla que le permite saber cuándo ha transcurrido su tiempo y continúa hablando cuando se acaba el tiempo. Puede terminar su oración, pero por favor trate de no sobrepasar su tiempo. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you as well, Ms. Barrios. Do you mind calling the role for us? And for the record, Dr. Stevens and Director Ty Alper, our excuse from this evening's meeting and will join us next week for our next meeting.
Director Julie Sinai. Director Anava Sudev.
Presente.
Vice President Laura Babett.
Here.
President Khadija Brown.
Present. Thank you so much, Ms. Barrios. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Moved.
Moved by Director Sinai. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice President Babett. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the role once more?
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Director Vasuvev.
Yes.
Vice President Babett.
Yes.
President Brown.
Yes, thank you so much. All right, you all, we have reached our first opportunity for public comment. As Ms. Barrios explained in her spiel earlier, if you are a student wishing to speak to us tonight, please make sure you put "student" or "s" by your name so that you may be given priority to speak. Right now, we have about nine hands up for public comment and each public commenter will be given three minutes to speak. We will begin our public comment period with Dinah Macy and our last public commenter for this period will be Edgar Salinas. Okay, can we please promote Dinah Macy followed by Jonas Lamateri Brownell? Oh, I'm so sorry. We just have a student to raise their hand. We're going to pause for a second before we go to Dinah Macy and we are going to begin our public comment period with Maura Walker. Can you please promote Maura Walker? Thank you.
President Brown, can you tell us how long the timer will go for?
Each person will be given three minutes to speak during this public comment period. Okay? Hi, Maura. How are you?
How are you?
I'm good. We're having a little trouble hearing you.
Oh, sorry.
That's perfect. Now, go right ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay, um, first of all, I'd like to thank all of you who are here for being here and, as you know, my name is Walise Walker. I am a former sixth grader going to the seventh grade and I am here to plead for you guys to keep the Independent, the Virtual Independent Studies, Berkeley, Virtual Berkeley Public Independence. Um, my reason for trying to keep this is because not only is it protecting kids and their families from the big threat, which is COVID-19, it also allows kids to have one-on-one time with their teachers and it creates a less, less of a chance to be distracted. This year, my sixth grade year, I had my online teacher, Ms. Flarca. It was really great. I got to speak with her for an hour each Monday and that just one-on-one time without any interruptions or other kids having to distract me. It really helped me get better at things such as my writing and how to cut it down and things like that. Um, as we all know, with the recent shootings, not just one, but even more and attempted shootings, schools are getting more and more unsafe and without an exit plan, if there needs to be one, when kids will just have to be left out either with no education or at the risk of dying. Now, as we know this, there is also COVID, which is also a threat and could also kill people. And not everyone can get the vaccine. Those, some people who physically cannot, those who are allergic, those who, it will spark up something in them. So for this, I just pleading for you guys to not only keep the Virtual Independent Studies for next year, but for years to come because we do not know what's going to happen in the future. And it's just, it's a really good program for kids who might struggle in class and public spaces to have that time with their teachers so they can ask more questions and get more attention. So for those who might be against it, I hope that this changes your mind. And for those who are really supporting it, I really thank you for hearing us out. Thank you.
Thank you as well, Maura. Next, we will go to Dinah Macy followed by Jonas Lamateri Brownell.
Hey, excuse me. I'm used to speaking for only a minute, so I'll be quick tonight. So thank you, everyone, for having us here tonight, listening to me speak. Thank you in particular to President Brown and Director Alper, who's not here, and Director Sinai for meeting with virtual families and teachers over the last many weeks. You might recognize me by now. I'm here to advocate for continuation of virtual learning next school year. Over the last ten weeks, you have been listening to parents and students fight for this program. They've continuously attended board meetings and spoken up because they know how vital this program has been to their families. Not only does it keep them safe, but it can, they can feel confident that the students are receiving the same quality education as their peers are in person. My greatest concern of discontinuing virtual learning next year is leaving families behind. These past two school years, students in K through five have been waitlisted for far too long because the virtual program was understaffed. Now, we have a team of dedicated virtual teachers and we want to continue what we started. Please continue to fund virtual learning. Thank you.
Thank you as well, Ms. Macy. Next, we will have Jonas Lamateri Brownell followed by Andrea Gallegos.
Good evening. Excuse the delay. My name is Jonas Lamateri Brownell, BUSD's Heric Hospital teacher. And so first of all, hearing from Mural again and from Dinah and like Dinah said, the last ten weeks of advocacy from this community, you know, the BUSD, the part of BUSD, the families, the students, the teachers, the staff, and the families of the teachers and staff who have benefited from this and created really a model. It's so inspiring. Let us continue it. I also want to specifically thank you, President Brown, and also Director Sinai for your lifeline support for preserving the USD's, these excellent virtual education programs into next school year. The USD's Public Information Office recently stated it is quote "likely" that COVID transmissions have been happening in our schools. You know, I read that. I was like, okay, wow, there it is. It likely has been happening. One U.S. government projection indicates that a hundred million new COVID cases will come this fall/winter. The SF Chronicle reported on Friday that Alameda County's reissued mask mandate is due mostly to rapidly climbing hospitalizations, but that the decision was further driven by this latest surge impacting Latino communities in the county that have been hardest hit in earlier waves. So let us in BUSD act to reduce COVID's unforgiving disparities and preserve the virtual academy and the virtual assisted homeschool teachers one more year. Thank you so much.
Thank you as well. Next, we will have Andrea Gallegos followed by Yvette Flarca.
Hi, I'm Andrea Gallegos. I'm here to talk about BFT's contract proposal regarding speech-language pathologist assessment limits. As a first-year SLP, I found my place with BUSD and I've loved working with our students and teachers and families. However, very quickly in the school year, I became disappointed when I realized I wouldn't be able to serve my students to meet their needs due to an overload of assessments. This year, I completed about twenty assessments. Each takes about ten to fifteen hours to complete. Assessment or prep time are not built into our daily schedule due to required service minutes, case managing, and RTI services. Therefore, in order to complete assessments and report writing, I had to miss many student services throughout the year, work many hours after the duty day, and most days I didn't take a lunch break. Missing services means that my students may not meet their expected progress, which may constitute a denial to their free and appropriate public education. Please support BFT's SLP assessment limit proposal. It strikes a balance between directly serving our students and assessments. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Next, we'll have Yvette Flarca followed by Anne Calagary.
Hi, good evening. I'm Eva Flarca. I'm a teacher, a virtual teacher with the BIS Assisted Homeschool Program. I'm also a member of the Equal Opportunity Now by Any Means Necessary Eon Bam Caucus. I want to again thank school board members who have met with myself, other teachers, students, and families who have been really advocating and organizing to keep virtual education and a quality virtual education program in Berkeley for next school year. I know you've heard from me many times and I know you've heard from other school board members and, or excuse me, from other parents and students since like March. And the reason why is because we are absolutely committed to keeping this program for next year. We are absolutely committed to keeping ourselves and our families safe from COVID and to keep a program that has been a really successful program over this past year. In the K-8 Assisted Homeschool Virtual Only Program, in addition to the weekly meetings and I call them team meetings with parents and students and the teacher, and we also have twice a week small groups that have been totally essential for, I know for me as a teacher, to be able to have my group, but also especially for the students. For the K-5 Virtual Academy, that is even more important. For the children, the young children, to have that opportunity to have a real class community with other children their same age, that is a real classroom, that is a real education, that is a real community. And to take that away, there is no substitute for that. There isn't. The K-8 Once a Week Program is not a substitute for that daily community for the K-5 students and to substitute in-person teachers to teach online for what has been an online-only program that I run or that Dinah Macy runs. There's no substitute for that because they won't get that small group community as well. The vast majority of our families and our students are Black, Latinx, Asian, and working-class. Some of our students have parents who have stage four kidney disease. Many of our students and families are immune compromised or who have family members who are immune compromised. We understand that the school board is debating questions about funding and budget cuts and everything, but it doesn't make any sense to me or to any of us to cut our program when the school board is going to be getting additional funding next year. And even without it, we would still be advocating because there is no price tag that can be put on the question of the quality of education for our students and the health and safety of our students and families. We hope you support the K-5 Virtual Program and the K-8 only, virtual-only teachers. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Next, we will have Anne Calagary followed by Laura or Lotta, if that is Lotta Rivas. We will see. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. My name is Anne Calagary and I'm a Berkeley parent, homeowner, taxpayer, and retired BUSD employee. I am here today to support the African-American Success Framework and to join the celebration of our district's efforts to honestly educate and engage Black children. Please continue to support this work, not just with your words, but with your vote. My son is thirty-two years old and is a successful concept design artist who works for Facebook. When he attended middle and high school many years ago, I remember our district having many discussions about inequities and the undereducation of Black children with no real institutionalized solutions implemented. Here we are, years later, with a comprehensive African-American Success Framework, which is already impacting the educational outcomes for students who are participating in programs like STEM Steps, EMOJA, and College Bound. Let's be clear, my son is successful because I pushed back when he or I were oppressed by this district. When his grade point average was less than a 2.0 in the ninth grade, I removed him from Berkeley High School and placed him in a Black private school that wanted to educate him. This was not a planned expense nor one I could afford. When he returned to Berkeley High School as a scholar in the twelfth grade, he, along with his college advisor and I, advocated daily to get him graduated with a high GPA and off to a UC. So I say to you all, be on the right side of history by supporting the honest education of Black children. Vote to fund the African-American Success Framework. Let's stop talking about inequities and take proper action. Thank you.
Thank you as well and thank you for being here this evening.
Certainly.
Next, we will have Laura or Lotta. We'll see who it is when I see her face, followed by Monique Duncan Harris.
Hello, President Brown. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Lotta. Welcome.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Rivas and I'm here as a parent and also co-chair of Latinos Unidos de Berkeley to share some thoughts on the budget process and priorities. Process matters. I'm concerned about the lack of meaningful engagement in the budget process, specifically regarding the one-time block grant in the amount of thirteen million. D-LAC, a district-level committee of multilingual families, was not informed or given the opportunity to offer input, and this is troubling to us. Latinos Unidos de Berkeley emailed you our budget priorities and I'll just say this here. The strategy of dividing our communities to fight over crumbs is rooted in white supremacist culture and is deeply problematic. We believe there are enough resources to support all of our most vulnerable and historically marginalized learners, Latinx, African-American, children who are from working-class backgrounds, systems impacted, also known as foster youth, and children in SPED who are also in any of these previous groupings. The budget must reflect our shared values and wrap our arms around all of our children as our collective responsibility. When we prioritize services that center their needs, when will we prioritize services that center their needs and lifts up their gifts, assets, strengths, and deep resilience? I had the honor of serving the Berkeley community for eight years as an OPI specialist and my job was to help address barriers to student learning. Tragically, one of the first things I learned is that our very own institutions are sometimes the ones creating the barriers. We ask that you take bold steps today in upholding your duty as public servants to ensure that all of our historically marginalized youth have what they need in order to thrive and not to survive in their schooling journey in BUSD. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Next, we will have Monique Duncan Harris followed by Edgar Salinas.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Monique Duncan Harris and I'm a math teacher at Berkeley High School. I want to speak this evening on behalf of BFT's contract proposal regarding pay for IEP meetings that fall outside of the duty day. All IEP meetings require by law that at least one general education teacher be in attendance. This school year, I have forty-one students on my roster with IEPs and I was asked to attend forty-eight IEP meetings. Of these forty-eight meetings, twenty of them were outside of the duty day. I attended almost every meeting that I was asked to attend this school year, many of them while rushing to pick up my own children. Some of these meetings were within the same week and some were even on the same day. I have been told by multiple special education teachers running the meetings that I was the only general education teacher that would be in attendance. Paying participants for IEP meetings outside of the workday is critical to increase teacher participation and to ensure that we are in legal compliance. Thank you.
Thank you as well, Ms. Duncan Harris. Next, we will have Edgar Salinas followed by our last public commenter for this evening, who will be Rosa Salinas.
Hi, can you guys see me?
Yes, we can see you now and we can hear you. Hi, Edgar, welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you so much for taking the time to, you know, hear us. I want to thank the board members that have already expressed their support for keeping the Virtual Academy open. For those, you know, for those of you that are still unsure about the program, I just want to let you guys know that this is a vital program for us. I feel as if, I mean, you have seen the amount of parents, teachers, educators, and other people that have been involved within the last recent weeks, you know, being after me, expressing their support and talking about the program. The program is vital to the families that are in it. You know, we are all minorities. We're Black, we're Latino, we're Asian. I feel that it's an equity issue and also a safety issue. Most of us have, you know, brother, sister, you know, parents that, you know, are just in serious, you know, danger if we, or if somebody is have COVID. I personally, myself, have lost already all my family, you know, to this virus. I mean, that's just one part of it. The other part is, you know, gun violence. It's just rampant. I feel like this program, like I said, is essential to us just on a safety level. What it has also been able to provide, you know, for my kid is an excellent education. So this is not, you know, this is something that we should think about expanding and not cutting. Well, providing more support to the teachers that do an incredible job. I could not be more happy. I could not be more pleased with the way that Ms. Flarca, that everybody in this group has been able to come together and just, you know, put in the work and making, you know, our children's, you know, success. I can see it every day. I can see it with my child when she's four. So please, for those of you that are unsure, I would urge you to please consider and give us your vote to keep Virtual Academy open. Thank you so much.
Thank you as well, Mr. Salinas. And our final public commenter this evening will be Rosa Salinas.
Hello. I'm sorry, I just started up in here with babies. Thank you for giving me the time to speak again. Yeah, once, one more time, it's, we just would like to ask, will you please, yes, keep the academy open, the Virtual Academy, because it really helps us, helps our family a lot and to keep safe. Especially this guy, I mean, it's, he's going through some issues. He needs some surgeries. And for me, it's very scary, you know, to send my daughter to school and and have her, you know, I'm scared that she's gonna get the virus and then come back home and this guy gets it too and I'm really afraid. And this one more stress that we are going through and trying to figure it out, what are we gonna do next? And yeah, I mean, please consider to keep it open and so we can kind of relax a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salinas.
Can I really take?
Yes, please, honey. Go right ahead. Oh, I am so sorry.
Let me bring her back.
Ruben, you never cut the kids off. No, I'm kidding. Do you mind, do you mind promoting Rosa Salinas once more so that we can hear from her daughter?
There, she is back.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry. I think the baby press the, the.
Oh, good. We don't have to.
My fault, my fault, my fault. I'm sorry.
Okay, welcome again.
Thank you. So I'm here to keep Virtual Academy open because I've been growing in knowledge and it's not only to keep, keep us safe, it's to, it's to also thrive in knowledge and be safe and the world doesn't have to go through all this, all this pain. And it's one less stress that, that the whole world can, cannot have, like, like, because we have a lot of stresses in life, I know. And it's one, it's one less stress in the world that we, that we don't have to handle. So if we can only keep ourselves safe, that would, that would actually help us and eternity. Thank you.
Thank you as well and thank you for reminding us of the importance of thriving in the knowledge that we are learning. Okay? That ends our public comments for the evening. We are going to quickly go over to committee comments. Are there any committee comments this evening?
I'm not seeing any.
Now I'm not seeing any either, so we'll move to union comments. Are there any union comments this evening? Video comments this evening?
I have not received any video, so I don't think we have any.
Okay, thank you. No union comments. We'll move to board member comments. Director Sinai, are you ready to go first?
Yeah, I don't really have any specific comments. I'm just looking forward to the presentation of the African-American Success Framework and the budget. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Sinai. Vice President Babett, would you like to go next?
Sure. Let me pull up my comments. My comments will definitely be quick. I, oh, am I on mute?
No, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry. My screen did something weird. So I wanted to say congratulations to the class of 2022. We are so proud of all of you and know that you will be the change that you want to see in this world. I also want to congratulate our own Ms. Neelam Patel, whose headline article in The Time Magazine highlights her work showing students that they can do something about climate change. She's quoted in her article noting that just seeing the Milwaukee Forest brings a great sense of peace and hope. She's quoted in her article noting that just seeing the Milwaukee Forest brings a great sense of peace and hope for their art children. She has shown her students how to partner crisis situations with actionable solutions. Tonight, I look forward to hearing how we in BUSD will collectively tackle our other ongoing crisis, creating truly equitable outcomes for the most disenfranchised group of people in BUSD, our African American Black students. This has gone on for far too long for us to not take this moment in time to ensure real change happens, to ensure the right seeds are planted, watered, and blossom to bear ripe, sweet, scrumptious fruit. Just as our kids can't wait for us to make a difference in the climate, our kids can't wait for us to make a difference in the classroom. So thank you all for being here tonight, for watching the playback, for taking time to really listen to what the community has said, and thank you to my board colleagues for responding with actionable items that we can do now. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director Vasudeva. Are you ready for your comments?
Yeah, I'm ready. Thank you so much, President Brown. I also just wanted to thank everyone for coming tonight to our board meeting. I wanted to thank everyone who gave us public comment, especially all of the people that came to give public comment around our funding priorities. I really appreciate hearing from the public and know and agree that we can do better as a district to engage our most marginalized families. So thank you for holding us accountable and for taking time just to share your perspective with us tonight. I also wanted to take some time to congratulate BUSD teacher Neelam Patel for her wonderful recognition by Time Magazine as one of Time's innovative teachers of 2022. I've gotten to know Ms. Patel very well during the last year. She teaches both of my sons, and they speak so highly about our Milwaukee Forest project. It's just been really wonderful watching our students at these three different sites become environmental stewards. So if you haven't seen the article, I highly encourage everybody here to please read the article in Time Magazine and learn about our wonderful science curriculum and our climate literacy curriculum. So thank you, everyone, for coming tonight, and I'm also looking forward to the discussion on the African American Success Framework and on our budget priorities. Thanks.
Thank you as well. I'm just going to say ditto to what my board colleagues have said. And thank you, Vice President Babid, for dropping the Time Magazine article in the chat as we celebrate the work of Ms. Patel. And for, for the incredible work that she's done with, I think, about nineteen hundred students in our district, which is amazing that our students have access to this type of leadership, and they also have the access to this type of energy that allows them to be leaders in climate change. And so thank you, Ms. Patel, for all that you are doing. Congratulations to you. We join as representatives on behalf of the rest of the district to rise, and thank you for the work that you've done and rise to celebrate you during this occasion. In addition to that, it was amazing to see all of our celebrations throughout Berkeley Unified School District. I had the pleasure of attending many graduations with some of our board directors here. But of course, the one that we cannot go without mentioning was the Berkeley High School and BTA graduation that we attended last Saturday. Congratulations to our graduates. We are so appreciative of your time here in BUSD and that it could be, the, the finalizing of your time in BUSD was wrapped up with a beautiful commencement celebration. We also honor the faculty, staff, and families of, our families and supporters of our graduates. Your energy filled us last Saturday, and we are so happy to be celebrating with you. Finally, to all of our faculty and staff here in BUSD, congratulations, you made it through a very, very difficult and challenging year, but you did it with the focus in upholding the values of community and partnership. And that's what allowed us to get to our final school day on June third. So thank you for everything that you've done for us. Please make sure that you rest well over this break and over this summer season, and get recharged as we come back into the fall of 2022, ready to ignite our students with information and also help them thrive in knowledge, like one of our, one of our speakers said this evening. So again, just on behalf of all of us here in BUSD, which includes our superintendent in his absence, thank you for everything that you all have done for us, and please enjoy your break. For the record, I forgot to mention this earlier. We did not have closed session this evening. That's why you did not hear a report out from closed session. However, we are going to go into our next agenda item for the night, which will be our discussion items. I am very excited about this first discussion item this evening. As you all know, the board this year has adopted workshops. So you've, you've seen a couple of workshops presented to our school community in regards to things that we are doing in the district that we feel we need to dig a little deeper in, gain some more knowledge, but also share with our school community. And tonight's presentation does just that. The Board of Education, as well, as well as the district and our community, will be walk through the final recommendations for the African American Success Framework. Our consultant in this work, who's RT Fisher Educational Enterprises, will walk us through these recommendations for implementing a comprehensive framework that works to address the academic and social emotional success of our Black and African American students. Along with RT Fisher, you may see some familiar faces to this presentation tonight. And additionally, we will be given a portion of the presentation that will be a crosswalk of the elements of the proposed agenda that are already some earmarked funds to support the implementation of the African American Success Framework. That will become very important when we talk about our budget a little bit later. But right now, I am excited for the first of its kind, this workshop on our African American Success Framework, presented by our consultants, our partners in this work. Thank you for being our partners, Dr. Fisher from RT Fisher Educational Enterprises. Welcome.
Thank you, President Brown, and all directors this evening. We are excited to come to you once again to share with you not only our progress, but also to go quite a bit more deep into what the framework really is about. What are, what are its guiding principles? What are those recommendations and strategic actions really look like? Hopefully engage you in a conversation. That's what we think about when we think about a workshop and what that means. And so we look forward to this time with you today. I'm going to introduce my colleague Vincent Harris, and I'm going to ask him to go ahead and turn on his camera and bring the presentation up so that we can get started. We've been working diligently over the last several days to make sure that we had a very thorough presentation for you. I'm also here joined by Dr. Darlene V. Willis, who is one of the partners of the African American Success Framework, specifically the College Bound BUSD Program Academy. And she will be presenting part of the work that she's been doing and what that looks like and means, as well as two principles that have joined us, both in what we're calling the Early Adopter Network. Ms. Heidi Weber from Berkeley Technical Academy, and Mr. Paco Furlan from Longfellow Middle School, who also will share some of the work that we're doing at those school sites. So our job today really is to, again, workshop, and I am an educator by profession. And so this is where I love to be, in the space where we actually are learning together, where we're presenting information, not just for information's sake, but for the opportunity for us to really understand the intention behind what it is that we are presenting tonight. But first and foremost, we like to start all our presentations with first saying Habaragani, which, as some of you may now know, is a Swahili greeting that says, what's the good news? Now, when we talk about this idea of, you know, what our students are bringing to the table, we start first with their assets. We know that all of our students in Berkeley Unified School District are bringing their brilliance to the table. We want to shine bright lights on all of our students so that, again, we are starting first with knowing that our students come to us already whole, already ready to go, already engaged in wanting to be a part of our institutions, in this case, our district. So we start there, excited about sharing some good news with you about our students. Tonight, though, specifically, we have three things that we want to focus on. We want to give you an update on the African American Success Framework. We've had an opportunity to hear some of the questions, some of the debate even, about what this particular framework is intended to do, what it's intended, and who it's intended for. So we want to be very thoughtful and very transparent about what we've been doing and what that looks like and means. We want to share, though, the majority of our time, the recommendations themselves, but more importantly, the strategic actions and get feedback from you, have a conversation with you about what you see and what you hear, so that, again, that we're really ensuring that it is representing your wishes as the governing body of the district. And then lastly, share with you the next steps that we're proposing, and again, get your feedback with respect to that. So really quickly, we're not going to spend too much time on, on items that you've seen before. You all know that the African American Success Framework is part of a larger set of initiatives or programming that has taken place over the last several years and goes back as far as about 2014, 2015, around looking at equity in a very specific way. And so we start here from the perspective that there are initiatives. It has been initiative with respect to African American students around professional development and curriculum and classrooms and programs and services that already exist. But our job specifically was to focus on a three-year strategic plan for all intensive purposes, or a framework that would be our roadmap for the work that we would be doing. So this framework really is, is part of a larger request, and this is really important that we want to share and remind us, what was the actual request of RT Fisher as we started this consultancy? And it was one to complete the African American Success Framework, to help with some coordination of service providers. And you'll see, for instance, Dr. Darlene here, as well as we have a regularly scheduled partner meeting where we're trying to make sure that we're not duplicating services that were coherent and that were aligned with what already is happening in the district, and how can we supplement, provide value? How do we add value to what already is happening? So that was part of our role. It was also to vet the process for recommendations around the needs that we saw and would hear from our families and our community around the needs of Black children. We've done a series of community engagements. We'll talk about what that looks like. We were asked to follow up and expand on what we call K-12 learning circles. We wanted to evaluate service effectiveness with respect to a data dashboard, and how can you get disaggregated or aggregated information quickly about students so that you could make good decisions about how to support them? And then lastly, how do we then, once we know what that information is, design effective systems of intervention to support those students who require it the most? So that was the full request that RTF was asked to consider when we started this work now, almost twenty-four months ago. You all know, your demographics, our, our focus primarily was on the needs of African American students, about twelve percent of the population. And then also, as it relates to our multi-ethnic community and what that looks like and means. But more importantly than seeing a pie chart, what we really wanted to make sure, we're clear, is that our job was to serve all Black students in one way or another, and we'll show in the way that we're talking about from a systemic standpoint in the entire district. And this particular graph shows us that when we look from grade K through twelve, it makes it a little bit more realistic when we're saying who are we serving per grade level and what that looks like and means. So there's a little under a hundred in K-8, around a hundred per grade level, and then you'll see at least a hundred in the high schools that we serve. So again, it makes it manageable and it puts, hopefully, more faces to the students that we are asked to serve. We also wanted to make sure that we were clear about the, in addition to the kind of work around the framework, we were also asked to provide direct services. And so this just gives you a, a quick visual update of, since the summer of 2020, the kinds of direct services that have happened on behalf of both African American and other students as it relates to our direct services. So what exactly is the framework? Well, as you all know, it is a three-year strategic plan that really has five major elements. And what we're going to do tonight is just go over in as much detail as you all are interested in going with respect to each of these areas, past district efforts, and as you can see around this wheel, we're going to touch base on each of those. The first thing that we really want to take a look at and make sure that we're clear is that we are and have studied now for the last twenty-four months or so, just about twenty-four months, have studied what has happened in the past. We've looked at efforts, initiatives that are taking place, and what we really wanted to do is determine that it's not, it's not enough to change something, change the outcomes for, in this case, Black students. It's important to transform it, and that's where we're moving forward with these recommendations and strategic actions, is developing a theory of transformation so that once we know what we know, we can't go back. So as we look at the first element of the framework is to look at past district efforts, because we want to make sure that those things that have worked well for the district, we want to emulate that. And those elements that have not served us as well, we want to make sure that we note that and be very thoughtful about what isn't included in the framework. So you can see, and you've seen this before, our job was to review and analyze the selected past BUSD efforts, and you could see via this flow chart that since nineteen sixty-eight to most recently, there have been a number of efforts that have called the attention to the needs of Black students and what their needs are. And so we started here as we thought about the recommendations and the strategic actions that are associated with them. We also wanted to make sure that this work, you do have an African American Success Manager who is and has been thinking very deeply about how best to serve, and he now has quite a team that has been assembled with the work that we've been doing this spring. But last year, two, excuse me, two years ago, he proposed a process called ACT NOW. And you see on the left-hand side there what the African Success Manager really proposed. And then the following year with, as part of the framework, we then took the ACT NOW and said, well, how do you do it? And put some actions towards it. And we still use this framework as we've been working through this program, so, project. So we wanted to make sure that you saw that there was continuity, and again, coherence and alignment with what already has been started in the district. And as the superintendent in December, as he launched this particular initiative in, in full force, he also wanted to, to know that this framework or the initiatives were part of a, a set of larger initiatives or activities that were tiered to what's happening in the classroom, tier one instruction. What kinds of interventions were happening specifically as related to African American students? What does affinity-based programming look like and family engagement? And then this idea of how do you get information in a way that will allow tier one and tier two to really be able to do their jobs better? And that's what that data dashboard is really about, is to get the kind of information so that educators, teachers in the classroom can really be able to know how best to provide the kinds of supports necessary to our students. So those are our past district efforts. Now, we've taken those past district efforts and have begun to ask ourselves two major questions. The first question that has really guided some of the work that we've done is, number one, how can we ensure that these recommendations are really meeting and setting academic achievement and culture and climate goals that measure progress towards more equitable outcomes for Black, our Black African American scholars? And then lastly, where are the opportunities for us to showcase the brilliance of our students? Again, Habaragani, what we're trying to really do is also showcase those bright spots and emulate those programs, those initiatives that are working well, and be able to give them additional supports. Now, as we've been engaged now for the last several months, we have found that there are three guiding principles that have really now surfaced, risen to the top, as we've been discussing and thinking about, how do we talk about this work? How do we actualize it? How do we actually put it into practice? And there's three guiding principles that help us stay very focused on the needs of the population of students that we've been asked to focus on. The first guiding principle, and you all may have heard this, Kasirian Njerah. It is, as you know, the Maasai um people in Kenya, some of the fiercest warriors of all the world has ever seen greet one another with this greeting. That says Kasirian Njerah. And a a loose translation of that is, and how are the children? And are the children well? And they ask themselves that in their village as a way of greeting, as we say hello and how are you? They ask specifically, how are the children? And as we started in this work, we needed to make sure that every strategic action that we were placing in front of you, we needed to be able to answer the question, will this strategic action answer the question, are the children well? Are they better? Are we making progress? So that's one of our guiding principles. The second guiding principle is this idea from the great American writer and activist, James Baldwin, that really, when he was talking to teachers in nineteen sixty-three, said, you must understand that in an attempt to correct so many generations of bad faith and cruelty, when it is operating not only in the classroom, but in society, you will meet the most fantastic, the most brutal, and the most determined resistance. Therefore, not everything that you face can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced. Since this is a three-year strategic plan, what we saw when we started to dig through the archives and look at past district efforts, and we started to see where there were opportunities for growth, um is that we're not gonna be able to change everything that we're noticing. But we're gonna be able to say this exists, this is what we see, and then develop a realistic plan of action to be able to partner with the district as a whole, not as a consulting group, not as outside entities, but as a full community on how best to address the issues that we see for black African American students. And then lastly, our guiding principle, third one that we noticed is that we know that there are many priorities that exist and that your job as a governing body is to make hard decisions and be thoughtful about how best to use as stewards of um the politic and of the union and of of again, the public, that we know that that is an important job for you. But this guiding principle with respect to these strategic actions, we also say that there comes a time when one must take a position that is neither safe nor politic nor popular, but he must take it because conscious tells him it is right. Therefore, per Dr. Martin Luther King Junior says, the time is always right to do what is right. And ultimately, what we wanted to make sure in every strategic action that you'll see tonight is that were we being thoughtful about how best to place these strategic recommendations in the environment in which we currently live? Was it that we need to do so that our conscious morally would be able to withstand what we notice uh in the work that we've been doing? So those are our three gr- guiding principles, you all. So now that we have that foundation, this is part of a larger context. Berkeley, yes, we are looking at Berkeley very closely and we'll show you that data, but we don't live in a vacuum. And we know that Berkeley has an equity statement, but in this instance, we wanted to define equity for you from the perspective that we've been working from this framework. And that equity, based on education trust West, we agree to, if you can go back one more for me, Vincent, is really this idea of equity means recognizing the historical and systemic disparities in opportunities and outcomes and providing the resources and the actions necessary to address those disparities. That is the definition of equitable outcomes and equity that we would like for you to consider as we go through the rest of today. Now, the reason why we do this, because in the state of California, as California, some of you might know, equity matters. Three out of five of our students are low income in the state of California. One out of five students in the state of California are English learners. And three out of five of our students in the state of California are are black and or Latino, la- Latina, Latino, or Latinx. And we wanna make sure that we're clear about, again, when we talk about and we heard um Ms. Rivas talk about this idea of separating our communities, when we know that in this state, uh we must stay firmly together, uh because together we know that we will be able to shift uh what's happening for our students. We also know in the state of California that we are seeing some signs that also are trickling down to Berkeley with respect to what we've seen over the last couple of years. Black student high school graduation rate has improved. It has improved across the state. It has improved in Berkeley. We also know that the University of California admissions for black students has increased marginally and not as much as folks would have wanted, but it has increased. And so we're looking at, well, what was it and what has happened in the last several years to to um see those gains? Right? Again, the good news and how do we emulate that? We also know that there is encouraging news. Again, uh for the work that R T Fisher does across the state, we work with all students, with all school districts. And what we notice when we work with our Latino community is that there is encouraging news. And we want to follow that news, that the number of Latino students completing associates and bachelor's degrees in California has increased eightfold over the last three decades. And that's because we know that there has been intentional resources that have been placed in our communities to be able to ensure that our students have what they need to succeed. And we know that that's working in several communities, but specifically in our Latino community, we wanna emulate that. We wanna make sure that we are seeing what those bright spots are, what works well, and begin to share some of the good news with other groups, in this case, the African American community. So we wanna share that good news because California's progress is trickling down, but it's moving too slow. Latino students in California, they won't meet their math standards until twenty eighty. And for black students, we won't meet all of the math standards until twenty ninety-six. So if that's the case, thinking about what we do now does make a difference. So that idea or that acronym of acting now is so important because we can't wait until twenty ninety-six and twenty eighty for our students to be uh meeting and exceeding standards. So with that, what's actually happening in Berkeley Unified School District? So as you all know that there are disparities and African American students in the district are right now disproportionately at higher rates compared to any other ethnic group, uh faring the worst, the poorest with respect to academic achievement per the standards and per the standardized kinds of assessments that determine what that looks like and means. We know that our children, though, are excelling in other ways. They're excelling. And again, some of you have participated in the area awards. We identify students in a number of ways. We have gifts and talents. And our students may not always demonstrate it in the most standardized ways, but in a district, school district, academic achievement is important. But I have to show you this, this, this um data. Um our students are uh black students um are three to seven times more than any other group um to be suspended, where our Latinx population is is um second. But still, black students are double what even our Latinx students are. So we need to be thoughtful about why is that? When we're thinking about the population of students that are the number of students that are part of the district, why is that? And what's happening? We need to be thoughtful about that. We also need to be thoughtful about only one in three African American students by the third grade are reading at the level proficiency that we would hope that that would be the case. So when we look at this data and we see that only one in three children are reading at the grade level by third grade, what do we need to be doing differently in our instruction and providing supports? We also know for Berkeley Unified that one in five African American students are chronically absent. We've heard that from our principals. We've heard that from our teachers. How do we and what kinds of plans of action do we need to develop to ensure that our children are in uh the seats? We know that that makes a difference and we know that that improves academic performance. We also know that one in three African American students, only one in three African American students are prepared for college career per the California dashboard, not the dashboard that we're proposing for you all. We're talking statewide. When we find Berkeley Unified School District, only one in three of African American students are prepared per that dashboard. If we go a little bit deeper into what the data is telling us, one in five, only one in five, this is very important, only one out of five students in eighth grade or are meeting the math benchmark. And what we wanna say is that these Xs are representative, but who wants to be responsible for determining who gets texted out, right? Who isn't going to get this? Who of the, what four students are we willing to have not meet this particular expectation? And we would all say, if we were to ask Kasirian Njerah, we would say that in this instance, this is a place where our children are not well. And then again, only one in four of our graduating seniors, class of twenty twenty-two, we've noticed are eligible to go to the university, and that's a public university, not far up the street from where they currently are going to school. Only one in four of our African American students um have completed and or are eligible for a four-year public university. Now, we know that we have lots of folks that are concerned about that data. This all comes from all of the presentations that have been presented in the past. But when we begin to look at it from the context of the strategic actions, we need to then determine um that this is an issue for us, for black students in the district. And again, who is it that's going to say that a child won't go to the college of their choice? And how do we make sure that that that's not the case, that we have to make those kinds of decisions? We also use the C-Sase, and we give you this foundational piece because when you look at those strategic actions that are coming up, it's all based on this information because we need to be able to address the data and address what the C-Sase plan has said are the root causes for that data being the way that it is. So with respect to the framework, there are other folks in the community uh that are doing some great work in the C-Sase work group is really doing that. They saw three, five major root causes as to why black students were not prevailing or thriving like that young lady said uh in our schools today. And you can read them for yourself. I won't read those to you, but the first root cause is around political will. Uh do folks have the po- political will to do what's necessary to ensure that African American students are then root cause number two, receive the kind of caring that's necessary, the supportive relationship with primarily adults? And what does that look like and mean? And then the third is that there is inconsistent implementation from K twelve on some of the strategies that we know work well. And so what do we need to do? And we know that um folks are working very diligently. We've studied the professional development curriculum uh that teachers have gone through, but they also told us in our engagements that they need more differentiated professional development to really learn these strategies and be able to apply them to what's happening in their classroom. The fourth root cause is really this idea of in- inconsistent data collection and transparent reporting of academic progress, which is why this idea of developing a protocol like the dashboard, the data dashboard, so that you can see quickly a cohort of students that you are moving through the district or through a process can really see what's needed, how they're progressing, and then be able with an early kind of warning system, some thresholds to be able to better meet students' needs before they fall uh in these cracks that sometimes they can't get out of. And then lastly, the root cause number five is a lack of equitable and consistent implementation of interventions. And so with our early adopter network, school network, uh and I know that um Mr. Furlan is going to speak to that and Ms. Weber is gonna speak to that. We really started to think about how do we partner to ensure that black students have those resources? So this again is the foundation by which these strategic actions were built. Now, I wanna pause for a moment, and this is a workshop. And that that was the, for us, the foundational piece so that we can dive deeper. I wanna pause and and ask, are there any questions, uh any uh conversation that we wanna have by what we've seen or heard thus far?
A Board of Education, if you have questions um at this moment, you can raise your hand or we can continue on um with the uh discussion and then we can have some questions at the end. With your pleasure. Thumbs up if you're good to continue. Hands raised if you have a question. All right, I'm seeing thumbs up. Go ahead, Dr. Fisher.
Okay, excellent. All right. So again, stop us at any time though, because again, this is a conversation. And uh we wanna make sure that, you know, you you see, oh, and I know that you have this presentation, but that you hear the context around it. And one of the things that we have been asked about, and this is part of the framework, is that we are not relying on our own knowledge. This is not the, you know, we we really wanted to rely upon what does research tell us? What are those strategies? So for each recommendation, we've developed a bibliography that you'll be able to click on in the final report so that you can read and be a bit, you know, go a bit deeper into what is the, what is the the theoretical aspect of why we are uh proposing what we're proposing? And what does that look like? So in the actual document, you'll be able to see that link to each strategic action as well as to a recommendation. So you'll see this for recommendation one, this is for recommendation number two, and recommendation number three, creating safe and inclusive climate and culture. This is the research that we used. And then lastly, um in recommendation number four, some of the research that we um referenced as we were thinking about the strategic actions. The next thing that we wanna do is just provide you with some fast facts of what we've been doing over the last several months, especially from December. For us, that was when the sprint started uh was in December. On December eighth, the superintendent introduced the initiative and we were off and running. And then Christmas break happened, holiday break happened, and then we came back and had to go on a six, seven, eight-week hiatus because of the world and what's happening in the world today. And still, this is what we've accomplished thus far. Uh we've had some sustained connections uh since the fall of twenty twenty. Uh we've connected with approximately five hundred members of the Ber- Berkeley community. Uh we've had a variety of engagement processes, listening circles, focus groups, community town halls, working with principals and hearing from them. We've delved into the Berkeley Unified Community with students and staff and family and caregivers, community-based organizations and community members. Uh we've actually started a network of schools that said, hey, we're ready to go. We wanna make sure that the work that we're doing, and that's again, why Paco and Heidi are here, to tell you a little bit more about what they're doing. And then we've met in seventeen visits, we've been in schools. Me personally, I've been on seventeen school visits, six school site um visits um at all of our school sites, in classrooms, uh in hallways, uh talking to students, talking with teachers, observing, uh and it's been quite um in in important activity for us to be able to not just sit and look to see what's happening, but actually be on the ground level. So we thank all of the schools and teachers that allowed us into their spaces. We also have attended events, the Emoja Annual Meeting we attended, we attended Black Graduation a few weeks ago. We attended the Bridge Graduation, and we attended both the College Bound Focus Group and Graduation as well. So we, over the last several months since December, have done most of this. And and I tell you, it has opened our eyes, opened our hearts, uh opened our even our hands with respect to what, you know, what to expect. We wiped it all away and and came in as a blank slate. And now uh our cups are pretty full of of what we've seen and what we've experienced. And I think it has impacted uh the work of the framework from being just academic and in our head to actually seeing and hearing from folks. This just gives you an idea for the third aspect of the framework, community feedback. Uh since twenty twenty, how many faculty and staff sessions and people we've met with? Families, students, total voices in the number of sessions. Just so again, uh you all know that we have been absolutely talking with folks. Yes, Ms. Uh yes, Vice President?
Well, I just wanted to stop at this. Yes, I just wanted to stop at this moment and uh just say thank you for this abundance of work and thank you for this abundance of time for you and your team. Because um this is a lot of connections and on the go, on the go. And you've been received so well from some of our community. And I just wanted to just stop and say thank you for this amount of incredible work to come up with the plan. Because we could have come up with a plan without thoughtful community feedback or we could come up with a plan with thoughtful community feedback. And you all have really done, outdone yourselves, in my opinion, with the with the number of contacts that you've made uh since twenty twenty, all the way, even through the pandemic. And so that's why I wanted to just pause at this moment and just really take heed to acknowledge um the total number of voices that are collective in this work. Ultimately, our job is to represent these voices. So thank you for going and gathering them.
Thank you. Again, the community has been outstanding. I mean, one of the things that I I have really enjoyed about this process is is really hearing from the community. And they are holding us to task now. Uh lots of folks have said, you know, there's one thing to hear. Uh, lots of folks have said, you know, there's one thing to hear, now you better do. And so that's a lot of what we're wanting to make sure is that we do our part. So this is a bit of what we heard, and and this is a fun way, if you all would would wouldn't mind joining us. There's lots of comments that folks have made, and we would love for you um if you don't mind to engage with us and just read some of what we heard. So may I have uh someone read this, this quote here? Uh, and then we're going to show you, and this comes from um the community. So would someone like to read it out loud for us, please?
Um, I'll read it.
Oh, okay. There's plenty, so don't ruin your next.
Go ahead.
Okay, there's gonna be plenty. So yeah.
This is something that could be amazing, but as a student in the district, as well as now parents to students in the district, I have not seen much has changed. I've asked, what will the district do? They put it back to the teachers who are already running their fingers to the ground.
Yes, that's something that we heard from the community. Let's go to the next and take a look, and then let's, we can just go, let's popcorn, it's again, education.
Popcorn, Ruben.
And there we go. Okay, Ruben.
All right, I'm, I'm, since my eyes are bad, I'm gonna read the one that's largest. I graduated here in nineteen ninety-five. This school changed my life. When I was here, people cared. I am living proof what happens when people care. My grades, uh, my grades average were Ds when I came here. When I graduated, my grade average was a B. I came here because I wanted to give back. However, so much has changed. We are faced with many challenges.
Sure. Would someone else like to just to read some of the other, the quotes? There's a few more, but these are from your staff. Now, this is important. This is from staff that we spoke with. Primarily, it's your classified staff.
Sure, um, thank you for bringing us together in this space. There is a disconnect. Those are two separate quotes.
Uh, this is a waste of time if nothing changes from these meetings.
How am I to feel comfortable when my job is to protect them and my hands are tied? These kids are hurting and nothing is being done to address their pain and suffering.
So we wanted to to actually bring that into the space. There's one thing to read it, but to hear your voices makes a difference. And and we promised, we did, we promised this, these staff that you would hear them. Um, and that that's why we've pulled these quotes and why we wanted to say it out loud, because they told us loud and clear, um, it's a waste of time. Uh, Director Sinai, as you said, if, if we do nothing with it. Let's just talk about some parents. Now, this is what parents have said to us. Um, Ruben, would you mind starting, and then we'll go uh popcorn around again, please?
Sure, I'll start on the far left. Important for parents to have a safe hub for engaging with the district.
Yes.
I can go next.
Yes, please.
I'm glad there is a bridge program at Berkeley, helps students get homework done, math tutoring, brings students together while they are doing their homework.
Excellent. College Bound allows the kids to think about college and not lose street cred.
I hope that my daughter gets a four-year college, gets into a four-year college, and that she has options, that she gets good guidance from someone who knows how to navigate the system.
The Emoja Program.
Oh, go ahead. No, go ahead.
The Emoja Program at Longfellow is very good. The support.
Supports of mental health are important. Clinician on staff to support student self-care, very positive for students.
Have a curriculum. I'm gonna get you, I'm one, I have one I want you to read specifically, um, Vice President, but have a curriculum better incorporate opportunities for art and dance along with academic rigor. We were forced to have a trade-off between taking language versus dance. There needs to be an opportunity for students to do both. So this comes from our families, from our parents, and these are the things that they've said. Let's keep looking though. Now, this one came from a community member. And so Director Babett, would you like to read this one, please? It's a little bit longer, but this person was very poignant in the, in the words that they, that they shared with us.
BOSD has historically and presently underserved the African-American community. As a result, families have no trust or faith in BOSD. To be most effective, we must prove that we will follow through with the plan long-term and most importantly, invest time and money in the successful framework. If we shortchange time and money, the plan, we will fail again. We need to secure funding indefinitely to programs that are proven to work like Berkeley High's Bridge Program and focus our energy in finding the right people to implement the innovative programs to close, not shrink, the achievement gap. It's possible if we take the time to prioritize the solution. We, because I am a part of BOSD, spend too much time talking. It's time to roll up our sleeves and take real action. I am seeing too many students, especially black boys, fall through the cracks. These kids give up because we are not doing enough, and it breaks my heart. Let's invest in them and their future because I have firsthand knowledge of how extremely remarkable they are.
And again, this person took the time to write this comment, to be in the space in a very, you know, often and to share their sentiments. So that's the kind of engagement that we received. Again, uh, I'm very impressed, of course, with Berkeley's uh community because they were very thoughtful in their responses. So this is part of the, the framework. And then lastly, uh, this has been kind of the center of our work, along with Kasarian and Jira. This parent at one of our very early community engagements said to us, I really appreciate this effort, the effort. I think we as parents are putting our trauma and sorrow and damage on display in these sessions. We do it because we love our children. Now, the question is, what will you do to honor our sacrifice? And that has been, again, at the center, uh, you know, Director Babett, I appreciate you, you, you saying the time that was spent, but ultimately, it's this quote here. Um, folks are, we are being held accountable for the investment that the district is making in this effort. And we, as an organization, take that very seriously. And we take it very seriously, so much so that this is what we read when we start our day uh in the work for Berkeley Unified School District. We are stewards of the investment that you all have provided to us, and that is why we want to make sure that this is done to the best of its ability. All right, here are some of the themes. You have this PowerPoint, so I'm not going to go over this, but this is, gives you a lot of the themes with each of those eng- engagement sessions. So please take some time to take a look at that because it is embedded in the actual strategic actions. Now, with that, we also have a series of partners that we work with that meet on a very regular basis and have been doing programming as well uh with um our Berkeley BUSD community. And so we'd like to invite, but we believe in people speaking for themselves. Uh, so we would like to invite Dr. Darlene V. Willis, who is the co-founder and executive director of the College Bound Academy Programs and College Bound BUSD, to share a bit with you about her experiences this year. Dr. Darlene?
Thank you so much uh to President Brown, uh, board members, uh, Dr. Fisher, her team, and all others who serve Berkeley Unified. Uh, it has been an honor being, uh, this is my first year, as you all know, of CPA Concerned Parents Alliance being part of the district, of Berkeley Unified School District. We come with, you know, we started in two thousand and one and have had nothing but success. So I am excited to be invited to be part of Berkeley Unified. I'm also very, very excited to have been and continue to be a partner with AASF. It has made, I believe, my partnership with Berkeley Unified um much better. Um, I'm able to, I g- I guess what I really love about it is that Dr. Fisher and her team have brought together key stakeholders. Uh, and everyone has the same goal of making sure that our scholars, we call students scholars, that our scholars and their families um have a successful experience within Berkeley Unified School District. And being part of the African-American Success Framework Team really has made a difference. I, we could go there, we can voice our concerns. Uh, sometimes we vent, but we never end without finding a resolution or opportunities to explore. And that's what I love about this, getting the data. Um, there is all, you know, also a challenge in uh in getting data, but a lot of, most times, I do get the data from Berkeley Unified through AASF and hearing people that have been working in the district um for a long time as partners in the district. And it's really, really made a difference. And, you know, there's been times when we don't always agree. And what I love about Dr. Fisher is that she's able to work with folks regardless if you have an agenda or not and facilitate that journey because it's all about the children. And when she talked about, uh, first of all, let me also say before I forget, this presentation was awesome, just amazing. And it really gave, um, you know, it gives a reality check, I think, and part of me wants to cry because I know we can do better in these areas. And College Bound is here to help and go, oh, we've had success in College Bound. And we've had challenges in College Bound, but as I, my great-grandmother said a long time ago, you know, didn't take, well, I guess I could say it like this, it, she probably used some choice words, but she said, you know, this didn't happen overnight, so it's not going to be fixed overnight. But having a group of folks that think alike and have a shared common goal of caring about the children and wanting to change it. And as one of those quotes said, it's not about, okay, we've talked about it and talked about it and then talked about it. And I've had this discussions with several people on this phone, like, okay, let's take action. Why are we still talking about it? We know what the data says. But this was more of a reminder tonight, and that's what AASF S, AASF has done uh for College Bound. It has helped us navigate. And I don't think anybody is ill-willed, but I believe that once we admit that there's a challenge, then now we can try to fix it together, not in isolation, but together, and to know the events, the programs uh that already exist. But I think AASF has brought us together with all stakeholders to find out, you know, what are you doing there at Berkeley High? What's going on here in this area? So we're at least meeting each other and able to work together. And then last, I just can't get out of my, my system that data. But uh, let me also say that that data is in alignment with College Bound data. Uh, and we'll get some of that information, it's being analyzed now, but it, it does not surprise me in particular where the area of um where they talk about A through G and of our inherited seniors and trying, some were successful stories and others were stories that are a little different, but we will definitely share that when it's ready. But I just want to end on this, when I heard that, "Are the children well?" I don't know if you've ever heard this song, but I hope you look it up. Uh, Yolanda Adams sings this song, "What About the Children?" And if may, I may read it, it says, "Tears streaming down, her heart is broken. Because her life is hurting, so am I. He wears a frown, frown, his dreams are choking. And because he stands alone, his dreams will die. So humbly, I come to you and say, as I sound aloud the warfare of today, hear me, I pray. Ask ourselves, board members and community members that are on the line, what about the children? To ignore is so easy. You see, so many innocent children would choose the wrong way. So what about the children? Remember when we were children? And if not for those who loved us and who cared enough to show us, where would we be today? Sir, where is your son? Where lies his refuge? And if he can't come to you, then where can he run? Such a foolish girl, yet still, she's still our daughter. And if we will just reminisce our days of young, you see, it's not where we've been nor what we've done because I know a friend who specializes in great outcomes and his love overcomes. What about the children? To ignore is so easy. So many innocent Berkeley Unified School District children could choose the wrong way. So what about the children? Remember when we were children? And if not for those who loved us and who cared enough to show us, where would we be today? And this AASF report is asking and crying out. And I ask all of us, what about the children and their families? I am honored to be part of AASF, and I salute you and the team, Dr. Fisher. I salute the board for allowing this to take place and putting together the resolution. And I thank you for allowing Concerned Parent Alliance, College Bound Academy Programs to be part of this journey, this history that is being made in Berkeley Unified School District.
Thank you, Dr. Willis. We appreciate you. And again, I wanted to make sure that you see our partners. And so we want to move to our educators now, because our educator feedback is really important. So I would love for Paco, if you could join us, the principal of Longfellow, and Heidi Weber, of the principal of Berkeley Technology Academy, if you could just share briefly uh a little bit about uh your experiences thus far, please. And Heidi, one, I'm gonna have Heidi Gold first, please, and then Paco? No, actually, per this slide, Paco, why don't you go first, and then we'll go with Heidi. Paco, please?
Okay, great. Thanks, Dr. Fisher. And uh, thank you, President Brown and the board for um bringing us here tonight and um listening to this presentation and really looking at what we can do to serve our African-American students better in Berkeley Unified. Um, as you know, Longfellow population is about twenty-five percent African-American, and we have a number of innovative programs that uh have had a long history at Longfellow. And we have a long history of serving the African-American community here in Berkeley, and we're very proud of that. So uh, when we had the opportunity to partner with Dr. Fisher as an early adopter network school, we, we jumped at the opportunity and uh we're excited about a lot of possibilities. Um, uh, Dr. Fisher and her group has been looking at a lot of data, um, have been out to our school a number of times, done classroom observations, have met with parents, have talked with me, have talked with staff. And um I think that uh we've come up with a number of things that we're really excited about for, for next year. I've had a couple of meetings with uh Dr. Fisher and her group. And um a few of the things that we are hoping um to do next year is cultural competence training for in, for our entire staff uh during our Wednesday professional development time, which is already a time that we have set aside in our schedule. And that'll be focused around Singleton's work, around critical conversations about race. Um, it's been a long time since Pamela Harrison Small was, was in this district and offering cultural competence training to all staff, and um this is just a great opportunity. And to be able to do it within Longfellow, I think is going to have a lasting impact. Also, we, about forty-five percent of our student population is Latino. So I think that these critical conversations about race uh are so important, particularly right now. Um, we've been so focused on opening up and being safe. We haven't been able to put the time into these critical conversations that, that we need to have in school. Um, some of the other things that uh we're planning for next year are um some uh working with Robin Fisher's group to actually have some staff members on site to do some case management with students and offer um uh parent meetings and support uh in uh our SST meetings and um actual case management with kids. We have a lot of kids with a lot of need, and they're beautiful kids. Um, and we don't have enough adults all the time to go around to do that individual shepherding and do those uh individual touches that make a real difference for kids and families. Um, we've got quite a few kids who stay after school, and um it's a great opportunity to partner with RT Fisher. We also have a number of programs that have been going um at Longfellow. We piloted a group called Black Girls United uh this, this year that Tanisha Walton um has been implementing at our school, and we're planning to partner with RT Fisher to grow that program and look at how that might be implemented at other sites. And also, we'll be partnering with our African Village Parent Group that's been meeting throughout the year. And then, of course, our Emoja Program um will be partnering um and also looking at ways that that might be able to be expanded throughout the school district. Also, we have uh the CCASE Initiative. We have quite a few initiatives. So making sure that all of these initiatives make sense and that they um that parents can understand what we're doing, that staff understand what we're doing, and that we're all working in collaboration. Um, I think RT Fisher can really help us focus our efforts uh with CCASE. So um we're excited about the possibilities for next year, and we hope to see you next year in the spring to present out. And we hope to see you next year in the spring to present out on success on what we've been doing. Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you, Paco. We appreciate you. And again, when we're talking about this idea of, and I appreciate, you know, I'm presenting, but this is part of the framework, right? So the, the initiatives that Paco was mentioning are actually in the framework as strategic actions. And you'll see what that looks like and what that means with respect to how it, you know, actually, what does it look like in real time? So thank you, Paco, and we look forward to continuing our work together with you. Ms. Heidi Weber.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for, for including us from Berkeley Technology tonight. I wanted to talk more about what the African-American Success Framework and RT Fisher and associates have done with us this spring and get into some of those specifics. And just really appreciate the opportunity to, to partner with them. So one of the starting places is if you're going to work with students and staff and families at BTEC is that you already have some connection to our, our site. So one of the important starting places was that there is a known person who, I'll give them a shout out, Dr. Rick Perry Elston, AKA Pastor P, who's on the RT Fisher staff, who our staff, who are veterans, already knew, knew him well. And so there was just a beginning connection when they started to work with us that was really important. They've come, RT Fisher has come multiple times this spring to begin to build and strengthen relationships. And they actually invited our academic counselor to join their two-day workshop that they had with African-American staff at Berkeley High. The most of the time they were with us, they were able to get to know the BTA community by doing data gathering. We have over 50% of our students who are African-American. And so they did focus groups with our students and with our parents and with our staff. They started with the positives and looking for assets, looking for bright spots with students who, they, they asked, "One name, one hope, dream you hold, you hold for your education or future?" And our students talked about being music producers, going to trade schools, being real estate agents, being engineers, and graduating. They asked, "What do you wish the school district understood about you as a student?" People from outside put us down for attending BTA. "Once you're here, it's okay. BTA staff care about students." "It's smaller here and welcoming. I like the small school size. What changes would you like to see? More explanations for why we have line classes and why things are different. I work better in small groups, and that's why I didn't do well at Berkeley High. Do away with grades. It seems though we're, we're being judged by our grades. We need better food. A food truck would be nice." From, from parents, one of the questions was, "What are you proud of?" "I'm proud that students can see educators who look like them and who are represented in the staff. This is an opportunity for Berkeley. This is a predominantly staff of color, proud of students who come here independently. Many graduate early. They're gainfully employed, taking community college classes." Another question, "What, what are the barriers? As a culture, we are misunderstood often. Passion is confused for violence, and there's no, there is no real desire for culturally appropriate approach with our, within our community. This is not just driven by race. There are social, economic drivers and other limits. There is no real community for us as a whole, and outsiders do not know us either. We need to work on building our own unity. We sometimes keep ourselves separated and isolated. There's lots of work to be done. Parents of color need to know their children have the right to be assessed. Parents need more information on IP's and 504s. This is not explained at back-to-school night. Children need to know about these services, not just parents." From staff, "What am I most proud of? The ability to differentiate instructional for students. The find ways to reach students at their current levels and staying away from shaming them. Build a trusting relationship with our families. Many students are in a one-parent household with a caregiver, working two or three jobs. Kids taking care of younger siblings. Work with that student at any level determined by and from the parents. There has to be a trusting relationship." And then RT Fisher was able to come in and do classroom observations. And they look for assets or bright spots. Here's a description of one of the observations. Teacher A knew his students and was able to engage them with a lesson. Teacher A was able to disagree with the students in a common ground, non-threatening or judgmental way. I found his style affirming and corrective at the same time. Teacher A and a support teacher were very effective in validating students. They had students explain their points of view or definitions in their own words. Teacher A was able to tie in current events such as the incident in Buffalo, New York. All in all, Teacher A did a masterful job in teaching the students that in order to be racist in American context, one must have power. So the next step after gathering data and getting to know us was to talk about what, what our plans are and how RT Fisher could connect to what we're already doing. They looked at our, our student, a single plan for student achievement. They looked at some of our other guiding documents and really gave us some suggestions about ways to have a focus on African-American students. So one example is in our, our school goal to, in our SPSA. And it was around a suggestion around a goal, which is to increase the number of eligible African-American students who will demonstrate grade level readiness based on the most widely used assessment, create an action plan, do telling key steps to engage and support students, building summer experience, set target by September 2022, measure progress on a quarterly basis, October, January, March, and June. And then with, you know, the hope to continue the work together, plans to do this continuous cycle of inquiry next year to examine areas of student academic need and instructional intervention. And, you know, continue to, to do work on other areas like social emotional support and college and career readiness. We have a full WASC year next year. So this is right in line of the work we need to do in our self-study and to partner with the African-American Success Framework would be phenomenal. So lastly, back to relationship building. It's important to us that we work with people that, and with an organization and that we have trust with and that they are there to support us. So at the end of a ridiculously, you know, hard, difficult school year, they actually came the last day of school and they offered check-ins with us, with our staff, and went and went in small groups. They provided culturally competent support to mostly black staff. And they say that they're, you know, available to do ongoing support. They brought us fellowship and nourishment, offered laughing and storytelling and healing. So we're just very grateful for all that's been offered so far and look forward to continuing partnership. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Heidi and Paco both. Again, it's important for us, for you to see what it really is, what we're proposing to do in school sites. That a three-year plan is one thing. But actually, how it actually, what does it look like on the ground? Both Paco and Heidi and Darlene have shown you what that is, and that is what these recommendations really are. So thank you both, all three of you, for coming to share your experiences and especially from the school's perspective. Because again, when, when Heidi called, when Paco called, we, we put everything down and came running because it's not about a contract. It's about, if we're serious about those three guiding principles, then you do what must be done. And so thank you for opening your spaces to us because it is about building relationship. I see, excuse me, President Brown.
Thank you, Vice President Abbott. I see your hand, but in a couple of slides from now, there's going to be an opportunity for feedback and engagement. So we'll address your question there.
I, I don't have a question.
I'm not sure, question, whatever, whatever it is, do you mind if we address it at the?
I just wasn't sure if the principals were going to stay on, so I just wanted to offer my appreciation for them. But sure, we can wait.
Well, I'm going to move us then, again, really not quickly. I want to show you the way that the recommendations are organized. So you all know that we have four big recommendations. Vincent, I'm going to have us go to the next slide so we can kind of see some of what we're thinking and how this works. There are two major categories, academic achievement, where you have recommendations, one and two. And then culture and climate, where there's recommendations, three and four. Now underneath each of those, and again, I'm not going to spend time talking at you. You can take a look that we're not just talking about standardized test scores. When we're talking about academic achievement, we're looking at access and inclusion with respect to activities and coursework and what that looks like. We're looking at opportunities to learn. Do our schools have what they need to be able to provide the kinds of academic supports necessary? And do our students take advantage of those? For whatever reason they do or they don't, we are asking that question. And then lastly, we're looking at this idea of our more traditional achievement and outcomes that really drives the data that we see in a more traditional way. For culture and climate, it's a little bit harder to actually quantify what that looks like and mean. Are our schools safe? We've heard that, we heard that earlier tonight, that folks are nervous, as they, we all should be, about the safety of our children and what that looks like and means. Disciplinary policies and practices. We have both BTA, which we're really curious and following students and actually backward mapping, starting with our students at BTA. And then we're going to go back and look at their trajectory in the district. What was happening in elementary school? What was happening in middle school? So we can deconstruct some of the experiences of our students and what that looks like so that we can be thoughtful about how best to engage with respect to disciplinary policies and practices. And then lastly, we've been doing lots of community engagement. So that's how the framework, the recommendations of strategic actions are organized. Now, we also are looking at this from a place of, it's not about, again, contracts. It's about a systemic approach. So whomever is going to do the work needs to have a framework or a systemic approach that looks at all students, a macro level approach, looking at divisions from a meso level. And then what are those micro level opportunities like A-MOJA, like what Paco was talking about? Like what BTA was talking about, where we can go deeper within the context of a school site to see pilot some of these ideas and the strategic actions, see how they work through a cycle of inquiry, and then propose whether or not it should be applied to, or could be scaled to other school sites. And so then again, it moves out and we, we see an ebb and flow of macro, meso, and micro kinds of activities to be able to move forward. Now, we also know that there are a series of barriers that we need to be thoughtful of, and we won't read these to you. But this comes from our work and know that there are some potential barriers that we are already thinking about how to mitigate. That this has been an incredibly aggressive timeline within a global pandemic. And we've still been held, to be quite honest with you, to the same standard that there is an expectation that we will complete what it is that we have said that we would do, what we were asked to do within the, the very constraints of the world, moving in a very different way. So we know that. We also are looking at ways that we can align TKET in the high schools. Because right now, we're noticing that if we don't do that, we again are finding some breakpoints in those transition years. And so how do we do that? So the strategic actions you'll see will mitigate some of these potential barriers for implementation. We also want to make sure that we're thoughtful about, Vincent, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide for me, please, some key considerations. This is important, and I do want to take this a moment because this is not a silver bullet. The, the framework, the recommendations are mutually, are not mutually exclusive of other district priorities. And you'll see in a moment, we look at the LCAP goals. We look at the CCASE goals. We'll look at the actual root causes. It's in alignment with those recommendations. The recommendations intersect with your CCASE and your LCAP. It's not separate from, we were very conscientious about that, that the implementation will require a clear and specific BUSD champion. We have heard the, you know, the, the criticism about having an outside entity do district work potentially. And so we are thoughtful. And I know, Director Sonai, you've asked those questions. Have you talked to these folks? Have you done this work yet? And the fact of the matter is, we do need BUSD champions to actually make sure that this work is implemented. And so that's going to be important for us to consider. And then lastly, you'll know, you know, after this session, that the recommendation funding comes from multiple sources. I'm going to pass this one. We know that the framework I just mentioned, it has, is an intersection of your accountability plans, and you have this work and know what that looks like. I know that you've been working on your LCAP already, so we won't spend time on that. But we do align the strategic actions with your five goals and what that means. And then we also take a look at our measurable outcomes. Again, we listen very carefully to other board, to board meetings. And we hear what folks are asking and saying. And the idea is that we want to hold ourselves and the district accountable for, are we making progress? So we are looking very carefully at how do we propose for African-American students some measurable outcomes that we can come back to you all, whomever is implementing this plan of action, can say, are we making these incremental progress towards the goal that we've set? Black Lives Resolution. Again, that tends to be, sometimes it could, and it's, and we know that there has been a Black Lives Matter Resolution. We know a few weeks ago, there also was a Latinx Resolution. The idea is that we're trying to remove some of these institutional barriers and be very thoughtful about how to address what our traditional marginalized population of students are experiencing in our schools. But we've been very thoughtful to think about, well, what did the Black Lives Resolution really say? And how can we ensure that that's built into each one of the strategic actions? So we're going to keep moving because we know our time is limited. I want to show you at least how these recommendations are organized.
I'm sorry, Dr. Fisher. I, I said that we could stop at the engagement place so that we could take questions or comments. I know that Vice President Abbott wanted to give an appreciation, so I didn't want to bypass that.
Thank you. I just wanted to give an appreciation to the principals because I wasn't sure if they were going to stay on. But thank you so much for embracing this work and for working so hard during the school year and for really being a part of the bridge that we are trying to create through this investment and through this transformation of change. And that was all I wanted to say.
Thank you. I do have a question, Dr. Fisher, in regards to some of the things that were just presented and board. You'll see in the chat that we have some guiding questions, I think, like as what resonates with you is on track. What would you like to see included in the framework, strategic actions, and what is missing? I wanted to talk about the potential barriers. Because, you know, I think we can do all of this work and we can, thank you for going back, Vincent. We can do all of this work and we can develop all of these partnerships and invest all of this time. And we can also invest some resources as well. But if there are barriers to this work, i.e. people or systems or just ways of thinking implicit and explicit bias, then we can't get to the true core of this work. And so one thing that I wanted to focus on was political will and prioritization. That's something that we struggle with, I think, a lot. We, I mean, we're joined with other districts and struggling with that, but we struggle with that a lot. And so I was wondering, were there specific recommendations that focused on political will and prioritization? And then are there best practices from other school districts who have focused in? I do understand that we are the first school district to actually develop this frame or to have an entire framework and not just a program. So there may not be districts to learn best practices for it. But have you all considered that? And what is your recommendation for us as we move to, you know, help people gain the political will and the understanding of prioritization for this work?
We have, and there are districts around the, you know, the, the Greater Bay Area, California, and the nation. Not as comprehensive as you all are doing. Again, again, it tends to be more from a parent engagement element, not from a systemic, you all are going to the core. And that's, that's the tough part, right? Most, most folks, you know, we'll give the analogy of a, of a tree with ornaments. Most folks like the ornaments, right? They, they, the tree is there. They like to put the ornaments around. They like the programs. They're more comfortable with programs. Yes, we need this. Don't we need that? But the way in which that tree, that trunk, and how it is in the ground and its roots and how that system is developed is where the tough part is. that system is developed is where the tough part is. Now, can we get into classrooms? We were, teachers, you know, actually uh allowed us in to see, they were very gracious and and hospitable. But that's where we know we have to do some of this work is, what do we do and how do we um really partner with educators around what they see and what they need? And so this idea of political will is across the continuum, and it's a belief system and a mindset and a heart set that takes a lot of time and effort. And as you all, as a governing board, um is really, really the buck stops with you. Um the way in which you lead, the way in which you um prioritize, it really starts from you. And then with your leadership of your um district leadership and and how that implementation goes. But I would say that that political will and prioritization really begins and ends with the five of you. And what it is that you all determine is the direction in which it needs to go and how then you work with your your district leadership to have it implemented. And that's what we have found. Vincent, do you want to add anything to that? I know that you also have had some experience with districts and with this work as well.
You know, I would say ditto to what Dr. Fisher shared, and and perhaps maybe one, one response I would give is that you actually do have the underpinnings as Dr. Fisher shared, I mean, part of our own uh honoring the past is reading board policy, and and even on your own website, you have anchor language, which I think potentially, if it is used in a way which is repeated uh both repetitiously and also strategically, I think provides kind of a drumbeat. Because I think uh to your question, uh President Brown, I think there's an element of can you enlist others in your system, not through, of course, obviously, direct power, but through direct cultural artifact of change? And we all know strategy eats culture uh twenty-four seven, but but ultimately, culture relies on rituals and routines. And so I do think leveraging the existing poor policies that you have, your existing position statements on equity, your position statements on what you want for students, and infusing that uh not just in symbolicity in a moment, but throughout all of your communications is one way, I think, to support the the ongoing board governance prioritization that Dr. Fisher spoke to.
Thank you both. Director Sinai and then Director Vassadov.
Thank you. I appreciate the description of the barriers because these um are not just, you know, typical, they're really institutional and systemic barriers, so they're not easy barriers to overcome. Um I I wa- I want to echo um Vice President Babett's appreciation to our principals for being here this evening. Um and I actually, what really, Vincent, your question is what resonated with me is when Principal Weber, when you talked about um what happened and just, I think it sounds like the last couple of weeks, but I'm not exactly sure, around um RT Fisher coming on site, supporting your staff in the classroom, supporting, you know, kind of administration in the context of looking at your plans and helping to redesign and rethink about how you're approaching your outcomes and your measures. And then the observing in the classroom, what, what I thought about there, I mean, actually, I agree with you, Dr. Fisher. You know, it starts sort of with the board, but it goes both ways.
Absolutely.
We can have a policy up here and not have the buy-in, which, you know, we also know. And and or have, we have buy-in in pockets. And I think in some ways, you know, we have the early adopter schools, which are the ones that are always kind of ready to go. Um so how we're able to also, and you know, and Principal Weber, if you have any input and census, as you're building that trust at the school sites with the staff, teachers, classified staff, administrators, that will start permeating the messaging of what's happening across the district. Um and it's not just a top-down thing. So I I really appreciate what I heard about being on the ground, working with staff. And I think in all honesty, our central office with the amazing stellar work, you know, Associate Superintendent Aurelio and um Tobias Cesspinosa, that you guys do, there's not that hands-on ability, you know, to put that kind of time in. And I think if we're gonna really make systemic and cultural change, it is what I heard from Principal Weber, where you're really on the ground, working with folks hand in hand. I'm a little nervous about how that goes to scale, but I think that's a great start with the not pilots, vision schools. And I think the more we can talk about that experience and share that across the district, the more that there might be openness and trust, you know, um as we move forward. So thank you.
And I agree with you absolutely, it's a both and, that's one of my favorite things to say. It's, it's both you govern and you you set policy, and you're working on the ground. People need to see you, you know, that you're willing to roll up your sleeves and walk in the door and do what needs to be done too. So it's a absolutely a both and, thank you.
Director Vassadov and then Vice President Babett and Principal Weber.
Yeah, thanks so much, Dr. Fisher, and I agree with what my colleague Director Sinai just said, that you know, I'm hoping that a year from now, we'll learn a lot from those, you know, early, early adopting schools and um have really good case studies to share. And I, and I do appreciate our principals that have already shared some of that, like um the Black Girls United group at Longfellow, I loved meeting Ms. Walton and seeing, learning about her work, and that sounds like really powerful work that should continue. So I really appreciate you, Dr. Fisher, calling out like what's working, the Bridge Program, you know, things that we're already doing that are working. But we also know that there's things that we are doing that we can do better, right? And so I have a question just about um outreach and engagement, and I'd love to learn how your team has been working with OFI to reach, you know, families and make sure that they know about the framework, that they're coming to the meetings. Just kind of high level, how that that work has gone. And then um I'd also love to learn about SARB, and you know, I, I haven't heard much about SARB, and I think Dr. Shelley oversees the SARB program. Um so I don't know if Associate Superintendent, I would do, you can talk about it, or maybe we'll have to wait for Dr. Shelley to come. But I'd love to, you know, at the point that like our students, you know, have have been trained for a while and um, you know, like, at the point that they come to SARB, it's almost like too late, right? But what I would love to know is, you know, what can we learn from their experience in BUSD? And how we can kind of undo damn, you know, any damage that was done to them as part of their educational journey? So we don't perpetuate that, right? So that we address kind of those systemic issues that you're talking about, Dr. Fisher. So I don't know if you've engaged with SARB or or Dr. Shelley, but I'd be curious to see how that, how that work can happen, particularly for our black students.
Sure, absolutely, let's start with the the second part first.
Dr. Fisher, I'm so sorry, before um before you uh continue on, we actually need to go ahead and extend the meeting. So I don't mean to cut you off, but I want to make sure we do that before it is too late. Is there a motion to extend the meeting?
A motion to. I'm moved to extend the meeting till nine o'clock.
Um it's been moved to extend the meeting to nine o'clock, Director Vassadov, is that a second I hear from you? Okay, beautiful, thank you. Uh Ms. Bodios, can you please call the role?
President Brown, can I just ask a quick question in the sense of how much time we need for the budget so that we can kind of map the next hour?
Um that is a good question uh for Assistant Superintendent Follinsby.
I think um it depends on on how much discussion there's gonna be, I think an hour is fine, we may need less.
Okay.
It, an hour would be, meaning we end this conversation now. So that's why I'm trying to figure out, like, the time is an hour, is it thirty minutes for the budget, is it?
Well, I was thinking it was thirty minutes, but to give us more time, we can just, I can extend it till nine thirty and we can hopefully reduce it. So I can withdraw my motion if that.
Thank you.
She will, she's gonna.
Okay, I can amend, whatever y'all need to do to write it up right. No. We can extend the meeting until uh nine thirty.
Director Vassadov, do you second that motion?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Perfect. Um Ms. Bodios, can you please uh call the role?
Yes, Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Vassadov?
Yes.
Vice President Babett?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes, thank you. Um Dr. Fisher, please, if you don't mind answering the question, sorry to interrupt you.
No, no, thank you. Um for SARB, the SARB question, I know that again, Vincent will jump on, and we definitely have been meeting with um Dr. Shelley uh with respect to that work. It's embedded in the third recommendation, so you'll see a lot of that in the third recommendation and what that looks like. So we can speak to that in just a moment. With respect to outreach and and how the OFI team has been um a great um support of this work and and all of the work that we've done thus far. Uh so we've had at least one um individual, Ms. Ramona. Um and again, I call most people by their first names like this, so uh Ms. Ramona has been kind of assigned to the African Success Framework to kind of coordinate some of those efforts uh with her colleagues. We've attended meetings um at least two with the OFI team, uh so that they were very aware, they got a an orientation to the framework, as well as when we were really thinking about that McGary, thank you so much, um McGary. We also worked with, um so worked with individual folks with respect to the Step Up Academy, the Summer Intervention. Uh they were very much a part of the um uh orientation to that program, to what the outreach efforts were going to be. So I believe that, again, they are a professional group of, uh a group of professional um outreach specialists, and we have definitely been leaning in on their expertise.
If I can add, I know that we've had both Robin and Vincent uh attend OFI team meetings. Been attended a couple of those this year, so really doing some work together, just to make sure those efforts are really concerted.
Vice President Babett?
Yes, um I just want to first say it was part of OFI that helped bring this initiative in. And so um there's actually no stone that hasn't been unturned in the connections and outreach work that they've done. Um but my comment was more around um college-bound, um mainly because I um am one of the board members who have attended regularly, and I know intimately about the program. And oftentimes, I I'm hearing um there's this um perception that college-bound can be done um either in-house, or it can be done by counselors, or we could be investing in other programs that are already in BUSD instead. And so I just wanted to really take a, just one minute to really say the difference. College-bound has supported a number of students with approximately twelve staff from, from just my observations. Um and what they do is their works, when when Dr. Willis said at the end, Concerned Parents Alliance, they actually empower the parents. So on these Saturday workshops, which our counselors aren't contractually obligated to attend, to go to, or to create, right? They are actually working directly with parents. They are also actually working with parents who have younger siblings. So I know for myself, you know, my oldest graduated, but by the time my second was ready to go to college, I was ready, I was even more prepared to get her through from what I learned at the last minute with my older child. So it's also around um creating those networks so that you have the path that we're learning as parents. Um there's mental health support, there's mental health coaching, there's family dynamics, and there's that affinity-based grouping where you can talk about things um that go way back and have deep roots in the post-traumatic slave disorder, which is totally different from any other program that we are doing within BUSD. So um this is a program that also has national recognition. So when kids have on their transcript that they were a college-bound student, there are recruiters at UCs and at um Cal State Universities all over, even private schools, HBCUs, that when they see college-bound, they know those kids and those families have gone through a different set of training. They've gone through a different set of community service. They've, they've put in some of this work. And so I just want to um encourage us all to think about how we're addressing all of our students and how we're addressing all of our parents and and not get into any um, you know, let's, let's promote this program over another. Because there's, like we said earlier, uh I think it was Latinos, Uni, State, Berkeley, in their statement, there are enough funds to go around, and there's enough need to go around. And so if you guys had any other questions around specifically college-bound while she was here, I was hoping that um my board colleagues could ask those questions as well. I know for a fact, I think I'm one of the few board members who've been to one of those. So that's why I want to open the floor so that you guys can, you know, have those questions. And thank you, um uh Superintendent, uh Associate Superintendent, well, you will be superintendent in a minute, so I guess I can just say that. Aurelio, for all of your support with college-bound and participation as well.
Thank you.
Uh Dr. Willis, I see your hand, and Principal Weber, um you did have your hand up, I saw, I don't see it anymore. Um so I wanted to make sure that I have gave you the opportunity to speak, if your hand was still up. Dr. Willis?
Yes, thank you so much, and I want to thank Vice President uh Babett for uh bringing this up. And I think that is the the beauty about being part of the AASF team is that I, I have been able to meet uh folks from within the district, within the community. And we literally talk about the different programs that exist. I mean, if I were to say, like, I I heard the principal say you're going through a WASC accreditation next year and getting ready for that. I I think Berkeley, if I can be candid, Berkeley has all, has the opportunity to make checkmarks off of a lot of things. Because you all are really, uh even though the the data is challenging and saddened, but the hope is that you're doing some great things in the district. But bringing together all of those folks, this is what AASF does so that we're, we're not in competition. And you know, people can say, listen, I'm not in competition here with you. There's enough, unfortunately, there's enough work for all of us. And what a great opportunity if we can start checking off the list internally. So in terms of Berkeley Unified, yes, you all can check off the list for a lot of things. Students, working with the students and making sure, trying to get them on track. And and this is where AASF comes in and holding folks accountable and looking at the structure. College-bound, what makes us so unique, and it's, it's been like this ever since we existed, is that we look at it from a holistic approach. We deal not only with scholars, but we deal with their parents, their guardians, their, you know, aunties, grandparents, great-grandparents, raising their great-grand. Because no matter how much work Berkeley Unified does with the students, if we do not involve those caregivers, the responsible adults in their homes, then we're doing our work in vain. And so I think that even when AASF came to college-bound, the beauty of it, they were able to see and hear from parents and responsible adults and scholars, of course, but that was the the beauty of it all and how we can empower them. So as Berkeley Unified is working on things to do, and AASF is working, looking at the data and creating the dashboard, college-bound is there to work with those parents of saying, listen, what are you doing about it? And being very candid and intentional about it and establishing that rapport. So again, thank you, Vice President Babett, um and all of you have an open invitation. I'm meeting with um Associate Superintendent Aurelio on, I think it's Thursday, uh to kind of talk more about college bound, but we're excited about coming back. And thanks to AASF, we now know the landscape of Berkeley Unified School District.
Thank you, Dr. Willis, for that.
And and before, and it's actually very um appropriate that Ms. Weber is going to speak because one of the things that we are proposing in the strategic actions is what we know happening at um Berkeley Technical Academy, BTA, is that there is a, actually quite a desert of additional resources as relates to college preparation or exploration. So we're through the ASF recommendations or strategic actions, we're saying college-bound, come to BTA. There are students, when they talk about what they're, what do they need to have as ninth and tenth graders who are not necessarily supposed to be there per their policies, but building a culture there that they have opportunities just as and just like. Because some of the other programs that are at the high school, the traditional high school, aren't at BTA. But college-bound, because it is fifty percent African-American, is going to be there so that we could begin to build that that um culture of, that college culture at BTA as well. So that's how the, these things kind of um intersect with one another, so.
Principal Weber?
Um I just wanted to give him that back to what Director Sinai was mentioning and and that the the opportunity to do really high-quality instructional work with a team of people who know what um excellent instruction looks like for African-American students and have that be a piece of what we're doing and and imagining how we can, you know, have that be connected to what happens at other schools. Like, we, we know that we have excellent, amazing teaching, teaching for. Like we we know that we have excellent, amazing teacher teaching for African-American students. In in lots of different places in our district and we have not showcased that. We have not done the case study to do that, to to show that. And then how do we make sure that that kind of high-quality instruction moves on and is is um spread. Across our district. So having that opportunity for for that partnership is huge. And then the other piece I I talked to Dr. Fisher about um when they were visiting recently was just. That their goal isn't to just come in and do this work for us, but is to um help us learn how to do this better. So you know, uh we need to have our our classified staff be able to lead these data conversations. And be trained and and have support to learn how to do that, or have our families be able to to do that leadership work. So. You know, it isn't just coming in doing for us, it is doing with us and and helping us come to the table to do it together. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Weber, for that addition. Um Dr. Fisher, shall we move to the recommendations?
Absolutely. So let let us show you how these are organized. And again, what I'd like to do because of time. Is um really give you a good orientation of how these recommend strategic actions link to. The um recommendations. And I'm looking at the time. And so recommendation number one is really about improving academic. Performance and it has the most strategic action. So I'm proposing that we won't go through every single strategic action because you do have this plan. But this first one, I wanna go over the the, these are the, if we were to prioritize those, you know, um. Strategic actions and what they look like, they're at the top here. So let's talk about those and what that looks like. And I mean, it actually is this page and the next page, just so that you can see where we're headed, because everything else is actually built upon. These recommendations, I mean, these strategic actions, okay? So what we try to do is you have the big recommendation and then you have a series of of questions that we're answering. Where yeah, they're numbered so that you know what the strategic action is. We tell you what the strategic action actually is. We give you the rationale, the why, why do we think that this is a strategic action that we need to be pursuing? We then talk about how will it actually uh come to pass? What is it that needs to happen? By when does it need to happen? Who needs to be the champion? And I wanna make sure that we talk about this idea of champions. The reason why the early. Adopters School Network exists, it's because of your K director Debbie Dean. It was truly Debbie Dean's. Idea and her, you know, really thinking about how to do this. How do we get this work into the schools and what that looks like and means? So that's a a a perfect example of what a B was the champion looks like. So when we talk about the who. And who would be the champion, that gives you an example of who we're looking for, those kinds of folks that will say, I'll take responsibility. I'll make sure that this happens. And um if Debbie were here, I would tell her uh to her face, thank you very much for being. Uh that person uh in her presence uh with those of all of you. But that's a champion uh that we all want to uh emulate. Then we have you, give you the the impact level. So as we mentioned, there's macro level, meso level, micro level. Um strategic actions. Some are gonna be for everyone. We think that all thirteen hundred African-American students and their families can take advantage of that. It impacts all students. Um and so we let you know which it is as far as that goes. We tell you which. Uh L cap goal it aligns to this one strategic action, as well as what root cause does it answer? So we know that the root cause is of the problem. These are the problems that have been noted in the C S A's. So this strategic action will actually address this root cause. And then what is ultimately the measurable outcome? How will we know if we've made progress? So this is how the the recommendations and the strategic actions for all four recommendations are organized. So that you can see, you know, exactly what each one is. So for example. We believe that the first one is about establishing academic assessment grade thresholds to communicate high expectations for student performance. As of right now, based on what we can see, there isn't yet. A set of criteria that is standardized across the district for all students, for all grade levels. That says, when a child is here and they dip here, like an early warning system of some sort, something that will trigger. Uh a set of interventions before it gets even to the cost team, what does that look like? And so first, we need to establish what those those academic assessment grade thresholds are. We need to, the reason why we think that's important, because it communicates high expectation for student performance. Irrespective of where the students are, on the continuum of supports and what that looks like, from those requiring rigorous remediation. To those that require acceleration, acceleration and advancement, we're looking at what that means. And then how do we do that? It tells what we need to look at as far as those assessments. The dashboard is connected to that. When we think that should happen immediately, we think that if there is a priority, and we talked about prioritization. And what that looks like, this is a number one priority, is to be able to identify what those academic thresholds are. We showed you in the in the L cap what that looked like to us, what we thought would be some reasonable um measures. And then who would be responsible for that? We know that you don't have this individual just yet, this position just yet. But if per what we have um been told and understand, it would fall under the purview of. Uh that position, the Director of Equity, Achievement and Belonging. And then our measurable outcome would be overall targets will be set in the fall with ongoing quarterly cycles of review beginning in November. And we would start with the early adopter schools and or um if the C S A's or vision schools participated. But at least we know we would start with those six schools to make sure that this particular strategic action was in place. We can model it. And then uh Director Sinai, as you mentioned, how could we then scale it to others based on that? So this is gives you an idea of, you know, how it's organized. Number two, the the African-American dashboard. Now, this is important. We've been hearing about this, but it's really not about a product like you get that. It's the protocol and the process of what that looks like. So it really is designed to be able to track almost a school within a school. Right? We know that the high school is um a set of s- small learning communities. But what if we were to look at use that dashboard as an opportunity to say, here's a a school that we're really go of students. Where we're gonna really dig deeply to track student data and assess the effectiveness of any kind of intervention that they go through. And start small and have the the intention of this, you know, um um. Resource to be able to populate that data in a way that you could get that information. And what would that look like so that we could make adjustments quickly? So that is why that's a macro level. We need to work very closely with Brea to be able to do that. And we believe that that also is a priority for fall twenty twenty-two. So that we can be have it in place and ready to go. So there's a business process in place and folks know what that protocol is. We also think that there needs to be a um as far as top priorities in this recommendation. We need to create an African-American student need profile, because we don't know at this moment. We've looked and looked. There isn't, again, a standardized way to effectively deploy intervention resources to students. Each school site has a a way, but it's pretty autonomous uh and ineffective without a doubt. But when we're saying specifically as relates to black students, we don't yet have a um um. A model that we could either deploy or say is what this looks like and means. So we wanna be able to create that student profile that really incorporates academic, social, emotional. And behavioral tiers for targeted intervention. And that is um. One of the strategic actions that we're proposing and that would happen in the winter. Uh we do believe that we need to create standardized way of uploading student data, because that would that is really, again, that root cause number four. Uh folks have called it out, that said that there are some inconsistencies that we need to be thoughtful about. And some transparency with respect to the way in which data is both collected and shared. And so we believe that this is a a high priority strategic action. Now, this is where programs come to play. When you look at this recommendation, number five, one point zero five. We believe in it, this was last year too. So this is a repeat of last year and this is where so the contract for Artie Fisher, the contract for some of our other. Uh service provider partners comes into play, this idea of providing extended learning opportunities. And a pipeline of services for African-American students. And again, that's why we think it's a macro level. We think that every student can be touched by the programming that currently exists. And or the community organizations that surround schools and or those service providers that can provide the special. Um you know, the 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 specialist kind of services necessary. And we identify that from pre-K all the way to twelfth grade. And that is again, one of the, these top five are the top five priorities. If there was to, if you were to prioritize what needed to be done, uh in each recommendation, those are the ones that have risen to the top. So I'll pause there because each one of these then go into some more detail. And we can do it a couple of different ways. Um I I don't need to read these to you, but I do wanna make sure that you have time. To to review them. And if we, I understand we might be back um at another time, either the fifteenth or some other time. This will give you an opportunity or the twenty-ninth, this will give you opportunity to get the lay of the land, do some studying now that you have all of these. Um strategic actions in your possession. Take some notes. We can also, and I don't know how that works, um. President Brown, um to take, we can take questions offline, answer them, the written, you know, answers to questions. Again, to uh best leverage your time uh for each of the strategic actions. So you can really dig deep in them and ask questions that are more relevant to you. But this is the way in which they're organized. For each of the four recommendations with, again, number one, having, I think nineteen or twenty um strategic actions. Oh no, I take that back, like twenty-five. Um but that's the largest one. The other ones are are significantly um fewer strategic actions.
Um Dr. Fisher, thank you for your recommendation to um connect with you offline if we have, uh you know, deeper questions about each of the um. Specific recommendations for um the strategic actions. But I do see two questions, one from Director Sinai and the other from Vice President Babett. So um if time permits, we'll go ahead and take those quickly. Director Sinai?
Thank you. Um I really appreciate the way this is organized, uh particularly in the sense of the alignment with L cap goals and C S S root cause. That's really helpful. Um one clarifying question and the other is, um it might be in here somewhere and I'll go back and look at the slides. The when is anticipation completion or like benchmark, right? It's not when does it start? It's when are you gonna be able to like use it or implement it or like, isn't that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Cause I I know that on the first page, some of it said fall. So that I was just like trying to say, so you're gonna, you're gonna implement launch in the fall, it will already be developed over the summer.
That is correct.
Like the the academic assessment grade thresholds.
Right. So we're 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 actually have been working on it now. That's what the data dashboard really is starting to put into context for us. So even with our early adopter schools, we've been asking these kinds of questions. What assessments do you currently use? What does that look like and mean? That's being built into the dashboard. So we've been working, this is not starting now. It's it has started. So we've, so that's how we're interpreting it. Vincent, do you wanna add to that?
Uh I would agree with everything you said, Dr. Fisher. I think to your question, Director Sinai, you know, if you fall as in in to possibly December, right? Cause there's an element of iteration. So what we have to actually work through is that particularly when we're looking at data sets. And that's why we have the recommendation around the process of data being uploaded, is that sometimes we wanna work through false starts. So we can actually, as Dr. as as Dr. Fisher said, there's certain things we've debuted, but then we get feedback. We're like, oh, we missed this or we missed that. So. Part of the fall is lots of ability in our iteration. So so we can have a few false starts, but still meet the deadline.
Right. That's all I wanted to clarify. It's like a lot of work's already being done and it's.
Yes.
Ready to roll, basically.
Ready to roll.
And it's in its iteration at the moment. The question that I have, and it might be, it it's a lot of strategic actions, is um. Kind of mentoring and professional development for our staff, our teaching staff, not, I mean, classified staff seems to be peppered in here. But in the sense of like, where does it fall in relation to, cause we heard, you know, and not new. We've heard a lot of comments over the years around, you know, whether it's cultural competency or implicit bias or. You know, what what we use in my world is also cultural humility, because it's an ongoing issue. It's not like you become competent. Um but just not exactly sure where that that fo- where that falls in.
Sure. That would be in recommendation number two, in the strategic actions around high-quality. Di- differentiated professional learning opportunities for your classified and your certificated staff. Uh we heard from teachers loud and clear about wanting and needing additional math support. Uh so in the actual strategic action, there is a proposed group of folks from the California Education Roundtable called Access. That is proposed to provide some additional supports to um students, I mean, teachers from fifth through eighth grade. That could participate in in have access to that. Uh there's uh, we got a lot about trauma-informed kinds of professional development. That's based also in the strategic action. So that all came from the community engagements with teachers. Uh and educators have said, this is what we really need. And they want a cafeteria almost style of professional development opportunities. Where they can really choose what works best for them and what they need. And from a place of cultural competency or humility. And or anti-racism, anti-blackness, um sorts of professional learning opportunities. We definitely have school sites like Longfellow that has that has really reached out and asked for that kind of um. Um professional learning.
So for institutionalizing that, I'm assuming that in addition to the new Director of Equity or a site staff. Our professional development, your manager, director, or professional development person for. So that we can begin to look at that institutionally would also be.
Yes. Absolutely.
We have the two coordinators, one for certificated professional development and one for classified professional development. They would be part of the power.
Vice President Babett.
Uh thank you. I just wanted to also highlight um the data and the model and the cohort planning. Um in the template of the data dashboard, because that's something that we've been asking for. So the L cap plan was initially um adopted uh within B O S D. The parents specifically wanted an evaluator. So that we could measure the outcomes of our programs and and really know where to uh reinvest resources. Cause they're doing, you know, they're doing what we want them to do and where to to shift resources. And so thank you for setting this um framework and this template up so that um Brea can hopefully take over and really partner. Um with this model, the dashboard. I'm also um concerned about the Director of. Equity, Achievement and Belonging being assigned so much. So even not to just point out that one person, but the who. So as we adopt this framework, um I like the idea of having a who, but I think we. We we're probably overextending someone who actually doesn't even exist already. In our first year of uh implementation. And so when we approve the framework, I would like to make sure that we. Um give the new superintendent flexibility to to delegate and to to really think about our infrastructure as best needed. And so that would be my only comment, that even as I I appreciate putting resources to it. Um but I don't wanna be locked into, well, the board approved that this is this person's job now. Um so I'm not sure how that works um in the in the adoption of the framework.
Well, thank you for saying so. Again, we did ask, you know, based on what, you know, what was, what would be, you know, best practices. And uh there is an even more detailed document beyond behind this. And so it says B S U lead, and then right beside it is another column that says all the other positions that need to be in place. To be able to make it work. So this might, this this might be the lead, but it requires this person, this person, this person, this person, this person from this department. To implement that one strategic action. So you all will get a copy of that as well. And we need to, and we actually need some direction from you all as to uh what you want to receive. This is again, still higher level. And then there's the very detailed report that we've been told is due on June twenty-ninth. So we wanna make sure if that's the case, because that's where you'll have all your links that will go to your research, that will say exactly who. It is, I mean, it's it's incredibly detailed. Um it's a spreadsheet this long uh and this deep. That shows you exactly where everything is and what that looks like. So uh Vice President Babett, it absolutely says that it may. This might be the lead, but it can't work without all of these folks um right beside whomever that is. So point will taken and uh we'll definitely make sure that we can either add it to this high-level summary. And or it is already in the detailed um spreadsheet.
And and I noticed you you mentioned the twenty-ninth. Um I was thinking you all were coming back on the fifteenth again.
Um, I was thinking you all were coming back on the fifteenth again, will we go in more depth maybe through this on the fifteenth and then we approve on the twenty ninth?
Whatever you all would like.
I believe, I, I, I can double check, but I believe it will be coming back as an action item. For, for the board to, to vote on the frame, the framework itself. So I'll double check the dates on that. Definitely before the twenty, it'll either be fifteenth or twenty ninth, but you all, you all will be voting on the actions on the framework.
So would it, would it be helpful? And I mean, again, I'm thinking now from a, a facilitation perspective and, and getting you into the, the document itself. If we provided, you know, again, in a draft form between now and the fifteenth with some guiding questions. I know that you all are very busy, so that you could start to dig into some of those um more specific elements. And then when we came back, we could start from a place of going through each of the recommendation and, and then, and vetting your questions. As relates to that, because you've had it, you'll have it in advance. Uh, you'll have some guiding questions for each of the recommendations that go a little bit beyond what Vincent put in the chat. So that you can, we can almost direct you, direct you to and say, take a look at this, what do you think about that? So, and then you come back on the fifteenth and then we can, we can uh field and answer questions. I'm just trying to think of a way for you all to be able to really get into the, the meat and potatoes of some of the, the, the details or the weeds, as they say.
I think that's a good recommendation, Dr. Fisher, if we could get that in advance. So that when we come back, um whether it's on the fifteenth or the twenty ninth, I think it may be this one night. But when we come back, we'll come with those questions um, or, or those re- recommendations and along with the guiding um questions or prompts with, with them. I think that would be very helpful.
Okay. Cause it is, it is rigorous without a doubt. I mean, this is.
And it's the twenty ninth, it is the twenty ninth for sure.
Okay, okay.
When you say it is the twenty ninth, that's the time we approve it?
Yes, that's the time it's coming back for us for action.
Well, between now and then.
Because we, we, we added it to the eighth, because initially it was supposed to come back to the fifteenth. So you're saying we're not discussing it at all on the fifteenth now?
No, I believe it's, it came to us on the eighth in absence of, of coming to us on the fifteen. So it came, it's coming to us on the eighth as a workshop and discussion, and then we'll uh vote on it on the twenty ninth.
Well, can I just ask the other board colleagues? Do you, do you feel like you will have enough time to make sure that you are ready with just this one meeting and to vote on it by the twenty ninth? I mean, I've gone to a lot of town halls, I've been, you know, really engaged in it and I've had a lot of questions. So I'm just concerned from that perspective.
Director Vassadav?
I think so, I think if we, if we do what you're suggesting, President Brown, really get the information in advance. I thi- I think that'll, that'll help us and then we can connect with the superintendent offline to Ms. Fisher. Would that be okay if we like funneled questions through the superintendent ahead of the twenty ninth?
Oh, absolutely, we would welcome it. And I'm, and again, I'm thinking, put my educator hat on, trying to think of a, a graphic organizer that we might create for each of these so that you can look at us, you know. Some kind of, you know, you look at a strategic action, then there's a, a space where you could take note, you know. So I'm, I'm trying to think of a way to organize it so that you all could capture some of your thoughts as you're going through it. And then you could funnel that to us and we could be prepared to answer those questions.
Thank you for thinking of that, Dr. Fisher, and we'll coordinate on our end to make sure that it gets to all the board directors in time.
Okay.
Director Sinai?
Uh, I appreciate that. I think also um that would, i- if we got the, the draft document, it gives us actually more time to go through it um to do on the twenty ninth. I want to kind of, um, I, I do want to echo uh Vice President Babbitt's comments around um. Whether it's the Director of Equity and Achievement and Belonging, or whether it's the Associate Superintendent of Instruction. Who really, you know, I think holds the bag on some of this, or if it's the Director of Ed Services. So I, I would like some reflection a little bit around some of specifically the academic um outcomes. But I want to say from our perspective as a board. I feel like we need to be at a high level and not line by line by line. Um, and I'm assuming when we approve the framework, there's flexibility in this. And there's gonna evolve, it will evolve. And the new superintendent will come in and she'll have some other input. So I, I want to caution us um from using the twenty ninth to go through each and every one of these with every single question we have. But more say, is it on the right track? Is it achieving what we want it to achieve? Or is there any red flag that we feel has been left out or is missing? Cause I feel the presentations that you've given us, you've given us a lot of depth of the community input. We've gotten a number of presentations around the goals and objectives. And so, uh, you know, I want to be careful about getting too weedy um and really. Getting a sense on are, are we moving the direction we want? And do we think we're going to have the kinds of impacts because of the measurable goals you've also identified? So um, I'm hoping President Brown, that we can kind of keep, keep ourselves. On the high level.
I, I hear you, Director Sinai, um, and I appreciate your urgency, the urgency behind your um comment to keep us on the high level. I think it is important that, that we do have um this information, so Dr. Fisher is able to provide it to us. Uh, we can do that and we can ensure that when we're here on the twenty ninth, um, we can keep it high level um in our comments or in our um. Before we get to um actions, so keep it high level um in our discussion. Uh, but ensuring that we do have access to this information uh is definitely, is, is what you're agreeing to as well, right?
Absolutely, and I think having, you know, having more time to have that information is, is actually helpful.
For sure. Okay, thank you. Vice President Babbitt?
So my um, uh, thank you, I agree with that. And I was just going to also say that the point of making sure that we also as a board understand um the line by line deliverable actions. Is so that it keeps us from overburdening staff, not really being fully abreast. With all of the details that's already actually on their plate. Um, because that's what happens when, you know, if we stay this high, then we forget how much our staff is actually doing or being asked to do. Or has been approved by us to do. So it's definitely one of those both am moments. And um, uh, just one other concern and around funding for these positions. Um, if we wait till the twenty ninth, that will be, will we? We will also need to have really at least designated some kinds of funds in my mind for a greater infrastructure to support it. I know we're trying to integrate it, but from what I'm, maybe once I see the um supportive documents. Historically, the reason why things don't get implemented is because we're actually understaffed and we're overloading people with work. And then we get the reasons why it didn't get done. And so that is what I want to really make sure that we're, we have enough time and we're thoughtful about avoiding. So that the implementation part is a success. Cause I don't want to hear, well, we couldn't do it because of this, or we couldn't do it because this person had thi- these other things on their jobs. Like the time is now to make this change. And so I'm trying to figure out in this last month of June, how we make sure at least year one is um adequately staffed. You know, your, your suggestion around leaving it to Ed Services, well, we got to replace that person also, right? Um, not Director of Ed Services, but the Associate Superintendent. Um, so it may, it, it really may be that we need to create. Like other school districts have, which is truly an African-American success department and an African American success, you know. Manager coordinator, like they have true departments that roll this out so that it's still systemic. Um, and I appreciate us trying to integrate it, but I don't want to be over, I, we. The, this bench hasn't worked that well in the past being overloaded. Um, I'll use one of Natasha Berry's retirement statement. Anytime somebody puts an and in your job, you should know that's two people's jobs. And it's so hard to do two people's job, right? And still live your own life. So that's what I'm trying to um, to really be thoughtful about um in this next phase. And really guarantee the implementation is as successful as it can be. Cause just like you said earlier, Dr. Fisher, we had all of these hurdles uh even this year in getting to this point. And you guys were still expected to deliver at the same high quality as if none of those hurdles existed. That's what's going to happen next year when people start looking at these measurable progress outcomes. They're still going to expect, they will have even forgotten some of the hurdles, right? And we'll be having to remind them. So my, my real issue is making sure that it's adequately staffed and not um skimming on staff needs to actually realize it. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll also take, oh, excuse me, Associate Superintendent, I see here, there.
I was actually just gonna move us along actually. And thank you Vincent to getting to this slide, because our next budget, our next topic is budget. And there's a strong connection to this work that you're seeing in the framework. And we're, we'll be highlighting, this slide does that, highlights elements in the, the priorities and budgets that are directly related to the work and the framework. Um, so just, you know, I'm thanking Vice President Babbitt, because then I mentioned attaching dollars to this work. And we are earmarking specific items that do connect hand in hand with this work. And so this is just a sampling of that. But go ahead, Dr. Fisher.
Well, for the end of our presentation this evening, we have a couple of things that, you know, next steps, if, if you would go, we, we want to end on a note that I think is important. We do have some key spring initiatives that we're still working on. So it's not over, was not over till this over, that's what we say. We still got quite a bit of work to do. Um, and so these are the, the things that we still need to do uh within the context of our current contract. And these are the things that we are moving to make sure happen and what that looks like. So if you all determine, whatever you all determine next, we want to be able to end on a strong note. We do want to let you know that there is a step up academy, this is a, from a training from today. Uh, we're very excited about the staff, um, I would say of, of these folks, one, two, three, four, four from Berkeley Unified School District. Their current teachers, their teachers that have their children in our programs, that we have a husband and a wife team. Ones from Berkeley Unified, ones from O U S D. Um, so we have um, in, and I haven't seen it in any program, we have five um certificated, you know, credentialed black male teachers. That are going to be working with our children this year. Again, uh, we're excited about that, our children need to see that, uh, need to experience that. They don't see that, won't experience that in their current classroom environment. Uh, so we're a, a very culturally, um ethnically, racially diverse group of folks that are working with our students. And so uh, we're just excited to be able to uh partner with students and with parents and with teachers uh this summer. So I think again, um, Director Sinai, the big idea of, you know, are we starting? We believe that the summer is the beginning of the academic year intervention. So we're starting now so that we can then work closely with, with cost teams August fifteenth. We've already got a few meetings on the books. Um, when school starts that first week, we're going to be meeting with folks to say, this is what we saw during the summer. We do have some next steps to be completed no later than July twenty second. Kind of give you an idea, we are finalizing and submitting the written port. We'll get you a draft though, with the graphic organizers so that you all could begin that work even before the final draft is complete. And then we also have put together for again, whomever you all charge as the person's responsible a year at a glance. If you could go to the next slide for me, please, a year at a glance for twenty two, twenty three. So we already have been thinking about what needs to happen over the next year to ensure Vice President Babbitt. That, you know, what we say is going to happen and what you all say is going to happen and by whom is going to happen. Or who's going to be responsible for it is in a year at a glance. So um, we are trying to start in the year and start the year uh already ready to go. So you have that information as well. So we're, we're hoping putting these things in place that again, whoever's responsibility it is, whomever is responsible for the implementation. Will have a roadmap, a very clear roadmap on how to do it, what it looks like. And um, hopefully we'll still be here to um be of support if that is the will of the board. So with that, um, we are here to answer questions again, Director Vassadav. We would love to get um questions offline uh to ensure that we can give you all what you need. But uh, thank you for the opportunity to share in this workshop. I hope that it did give you some additional um supports, guiding principles, what we've heard, what we've seen. How we've used it to create and align with current accountability plans and also a roadmap for uh the next academic year. So thanks so much, thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Fisher, um, and, and the team at RT Fisher as well as our amazing principals. Um, and guests uh from College Bound who joined you for this presentation uh this evening. Um, we've been hearing throughout the year has the incredible work for implementation of some of these things. We've been hearing about the listening circles, uh, the vision schools. And it is really incredible to hear all of this in one place. Um, and to have the opportunity for the board to really kind of dig deep to see what is going on um in this African-American success framework. We've heard stories from families about um how challenging it has been to serve their black and African-American students in Berkeley Unified School District. Uh, we've also heard from our counterparts who are also identified um as vulnerable scholars. But we know that this is the pathway and this is the roadmap to ensuring that we close those opportunity and educational gaps. Um, but as well as heal the need, heal uh our community and meet the needs of our community. And we couldn't be more honored to walk in partnership with you for this work. So thank you so much for all that you have done um and all that you will continue to do if uh the will of the board says the same on the twenty ninth.
Thank you so much. And again, I just like to say in public, because we don't do it very often. Uh, but there's no way, and you know, it just happens to be that my name is, is brought up quite a bit, but I have an amazing team. But it's led uh by Vincent Harris and there's no way that we could have done this work uh without his first knowledge, his expertise. And I like to say publicly, thank you so much for the work that you've put into um this particular um framework. But also the collegial partnership that you have um built for the work with the other folks that we've been working with. So thank you Vincent in public uh for all that you have done as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Harris. Well, this was amazing and, and we are uh ending a presentation with smiles. So that's great, thank you for that and uh, thank you for the smiles that you have given to us. So we will now um go on to our next agenda item for the evening. Uh, which hopefully there will continue to be more smiles with this agenda item as well. But we're going to move uh to our next and final agenda item of the meeting, which is actually an action, uh, action item to approve uh the budget reductions and priorities for. Uh, the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three academic year. As so without further ado, Assistant Superintendent Pauline Valensby, go ahead and take it away. Uh, you gotta unmute that.
I'm muted for so long. So um, I'm going to share my screen and take us through a presentation um that um, that actually identifies the goal of the. Of tonight's, um, the outcomes of tonight's meeting. And if, it's some information that I also um, uh, share slideshow, wrong button. Okay. So hopefully everybody can see my screen and um, actually this is the wrong presentation, sorry, let me get it right on. That was yes, last week, so give me a second, please.
Do you want me to share my screen? I think I have it.
Um, if you do, that's fine, I can also spend a few seconds more. If you have it moving, that will be he- helpful.
Okay, well, I have it up. Let's go, then just tell me when to click.
Okay, thank you very much, sorry about that, I was.
That's okay, don't worry, I was saying on the wrong.
I was gonna make a joke that we gave you enough time, Assistant Superintendent Valensby to have it open.
I know, I, I thought I had it opened all evening, sitting and waiting, so sorry about that, everybody. Um, so um, so as I mentioned, we're going to be voting on um reductions and priorities. And I'll also be sharing an update that I, that I received um last Friday regarding the um, the block grant. So can we go to the next slide? So reiterating the outcome, we want the board to vote on budget priorities and reductions. And also receive a, a one-time update on the um, on the one-time discretionary block grant. And the board is going to be voting tonight on reductions in the unrestricted general fund. Priorities in the unrestricted general fund as well as other funding sources. And receive an update on one-time discretionary block grant, both from the common message and from one of. and from one of our organizations that we shared this information with. Next slide. Reiterating the agenda, I've already gone through that. I also have a slide on next steps in terms of the budget and budget reductions. Next slide. So this link actually takes us to the vote, takes us to the list of budget reductions and priorities that I'm asking the board to vote on. So may you open that link, Ruben. Can we go to the second tab?
Can everyone see that or how's the size or do I need to reduce it?
I can see it. We can see it. Okay. The only thing that is kind of off are how each of our committees voted. But we went over that last time. So it's fine where it is. Thank you.
Maybe a little better?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
So I shared this list of budget reductions and budget balancing solutions with the board previously. And I just want to reiterate that on row seven, that, that we adjust class size for enrollment. That's actually from our teacher template formula. So staff wanted to identify where they, where we were going to receive additional funding as well as where we're going to have to make additional cuts. So this is from the teacher template. So we would not normally make changes there. And if we go down some more. And this other, on the virtual academy, the virtual academy was a one-year program. So by, by putting it on the cut list, it's actually the same, admitting that it was a one-time program. And if we want to fund it again, it should be added as a budget priority on our other tab. Clarification on the OFEE position, that is technically not recommended or considered by the board or by the superintendent and staff or Sback. And also there was a no. I think we had a yes the last time, but that was incorrect for the last category there. So, so without further ado, I would like the board to vote on our ongoing and one-time budget reductions and budget balancing solutions. Do you have any questions, Julie? Yes.
Assistant Superintendent Follinsby, before we do that, it is my pleasure to have us pull out or discuss items where there isn't a unanimous vote on and then go to the reductions, if that's okay with the board. So the first thing that we'll do is we can answer, I'm not sure, Director Sinai, if your hand is up for a question or for a recommendation.
Clarification.
Okay, go ahead and get your clarification and then we can go through.
So if we are interested in adding teachers back to targeted elementary schools or reinstating the virtual academy or an aspect of it, we would have that conversation when we talk about the one-time block grant funds.
Or.
Or priorities.
Or priorities.
Okay, so by voting on the reduction now doesn't eliminate the discussion about whether or not we add something in later and something else.
Exactly.
Okay, that's it.
However, let, let me, exactly, but let me be very clear about this. Assistant Superintendent Follinsby, you can correct me if I'm wrong. When we are looking at this list of reductions, so for example, for the virtual academy, it does need to have the, we, we would either accept this as an entire group. But if we are interested in pulling it off of the reduction list, then we do need to vote on that separately. We can then, if we vote on that separately and it does pass, we can then add it to our list for priorities. But we first would need to pull it from the staff recommendations for it to be something that we decide not to reduce. Not to add to our reductions.
So I think that's a little complicated. We had put this on this tab because it was actually funded by one-time funds last year. So normally it would just fall away. But we listed this here because we're trying to identify sources or savings that we would have in the, in the general fund. So, so this is where the, this is actually, it is one time, it was voted to be one time by the board the last time. So if it wants to be ongoing, it needs to be added as a priority. So we wouldn't need to separate it out because by virtue of how it was set up, it was using one-time funds.
So President Brown, maybe to clarify, if you scroll up to the column title, is it general fund?
Yes.
So that's where the, so it'd be reducing it from the general fund.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So what does that mean about the OFEE position? Because that.
The OFEE position is actually, nobody supported it. So the board, the board would actually be going through each item and we can vote as a group. But if the board determines that there should not be a reduction, which would concur with the superintendent and Sback, then the board will put an N in that column.
So can I make a motion to approve the recommendations excluding the OFEE supervisor position? Since everything else, is it yes?
You, you, you could make a motion to do that, Director Babbitt. But I do want to go back before you do that to be very clear about the reduction. So this for the virtual academy, if we, before we do that, let's, let's do what I recommended in the beginning. So if there are specific things that need to be called out or pulled out, let's pull those out first. Let's have discussion on those first and then we can accept the, the recommendation of staff. I think that's the cleanest and easiest way to do that. So I'm going to, let's start with the virtual academy. We'll start with that discussion first because I know that that is a place where we don't have unanimous votes on. So I am recommending, my recommendation is that we pull that from the list of reductions. And so that's my motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I'm sorry, can I get clarification?
Yes.
So you're pulling it for discussion or you want it to stay in the general fund?
We are having a discussion about it right now to pull it from the list of reductions, from the reductions of the general fund.
I'll second it for discussion.
Well, we don't, this is the discussion on, Director Sinai, we are on the discussion part of it. So if there's further discussion that needs to be had, I know we had discussion earlier. So I realized that there may not have been a need for a huge discussion right now. So I made the recommend, I made the motion to, to pull it from the staff recommended list of reductions. And I am looking for a second if there is one.
Can I make a comment?
There's no second because I think they're saying they're gonna, she's gonna support in a budget priority addition.
I, and I, and I hear that. However, it is still on the list of reductions. So we would need to, if we are accepting the staff reductions as a total thing, then we would need to vote on that. But because it is something that needs to be pulled out from this conversation first, we have to vote on this. So I'm not accepting.
We, we actually don't.
Motion.
We actually don't. I, I don't think that's what you're hearing. What, what, what staff is saying now to us is that it's already not in the general fund. So by pulling it out, you, what you really want to do is add it back in as a priority on the, in the next phase.
True. And I do want to add it as a priority in the next phase. However.
You want it to be a priority of the general fund or, or multiple sources?
I want it to be a priority. When we get to the next phase, I will recommend to staff to place it, to find the funding for it, whether it is general fund or, you know, otherwise. That would be my recommendation to staff. But what I'm understanding first is that we are dealing with the reductions. And because this is on the list of reductions, I do not fully accept the list of reductions from staff because this is added to it. So my recommendation first was to vote on these things where we don't have a unanimous decision. And then when we get to the priorities, I will then add it to the priorities with staff's recommendation to fund it, however staff sees fit. That, that's my, that is my motion and it's still on the floor. If there is not a second to the motion, then the motion dies and that's fine. But is there a second to the motion?
But the motion dying doesn't prevent us from adding it back in, in one of the other.
No, it does. It, it does not prevent us from doing that, but it prevents us from, so, but it prevents the recommendation that I made to take these things out separately from the reductions. So the motion dies and we will move on. Now we can go back to the original motion from Vice President Babbitt, which was to accept all of the staff recommendations minus the OFEE director position at the bottom, the information that was confusing at the bottom. Is that correct, Vice President Babbitt? Or did I state?
Actually, we can accept all of the staff recommendations because they, they even say no, which means it wouldn't be reduced. And my goal is to make sure we keep that supervisor position in the general fund. So I will.
Accept staff recommendations.
I will second.
Seconded by Director Vassadav, Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll?
Yes, I can. Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Vassadav?
Yes.
Vice President Babbitt?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That is helpful. So we will indicate the board vote in the, in the document. And then I will, Ruben, if you could check on the, this is right now on the board priorities. Thank you. You're ahead of me. So these are priorities that we have brought to the board before with comments from our budget partners. So in terms of this list, this is where if the board wants to add recommendations, we can certainly add it to this list. But so President Brown, did you want to see if there's any discussion on any of these items or?
Yes, please. Is there any discussion on any of the items that are already listed here as priorities? And then Assistant Superintendent Follinsby, if it is okay with you, can we then take recommendations after that?
Sure.
All right. So from what is already listed, is there any discussion, any questions, anything that needs to be pulled to talk about individually? Director Vassadav?
So point of clarification here, Associate Superintendent Aurelio. I do want to add and discuss the funding for the master plan. But I want to discuss that within the context of, you know, funding for the other years in the one-time block grant category. Is it better to do that then or, or now?
So.
For the one year, right?
This is just the current priorities. We, and Assistant Superintendent Follinsby, the one-time block grant, we're going to be providing information, but we're not at this point voting on anything associated with this tab.
Right. And I'll explain a little further in the presentation. This funding is still very much up in the air. And there's a lot of debate and I can take you through the slide that discusses this specifically. But I thought if we, if we focused on just the reductions and priorities now, we can revisit the one-time block grant.
And I guess the question for clarity from Director Vassadav is, when would she or the board give us recommendations for that one time? Are we going to hear those recommendations?
That's going to be.
I mean, upcoming.
So, so Director Vassadav could, it could either look at this recommendation from the general fund, from existing funds that we have, or you can identify another funding source, which could be the additional revenue from the state, which as we now understand, we're not sure what format that's going to take. We know we're going to get additional funding. Or you can recommend that the general fund with the funding that we have now should be increased to meet that priority.
Right. I guess I, I'm going to, to recommend that we use the one-time fund. So I'll wait for, we're going to be able to give you comments, right? Tonight, this is written and informed beyond on the one-time block grant. And areas where we want to see more growth. So even if it's called out here, the implementation, it is also in the other. Okay. So I'll just, I'll save my budgets for that, my comments for that.
But then you put it down.
I, I'm sorry. It's just a little bit of a confusing process. I too have some suggestion. I know we're not approving the one-time block grant, but I just wanted to affirm we're going to give suggestions because.
Correct.
Okay, perfect.
And so just to, just to recap, all we are doing right now, so we just did the reductions and we voted on the reductions. Right now we are going to vote on the priorities. When we get to the one-time block grants, Associate Superintendent Follinsby is going to rock us through next steps and the information around that. But we aren't going to vote on that one. I know you guys know that, but we aren't going to vote on that one. So right now we are just going to vote on the priorities. So my original question, my original ask of the board was where, were there anything in this, was there anything in this priority list that staff provided to us that we needed to pull out for questions or clarification or concerns or to vote on individually? That's first. If there isn't any, we will then, you know, receive the staff recommendation. But there's also space to add additions right now if you have any. Okay? We all clear on that? Okay, cool. Director Vassadav?
My additions would be around mental health support for the high school. And I think it's a three fifty that's called out. Let me look at the line item.
That would be helpful. Which line item is taken short on?
I think it's thirty-seven, Associate Superintendent Aurelio.
Thirty-seven.
There we go.
The, the one that's affiliated with the City of Berkeley Mental Health Grant?
Yes. And I know, I know that Dr. Shelley is running the stakeholder group for this, correct?
Yeah, it's partnership with the City of Berkeley. So we're, we will be hiring a coordinator. That's the one sort of staff item affiliated with this grant. And then there's a steering committee that's a, that's a mixed committee. And their recommendations will come in the fall once they've done their full assessment. So you are not going to see these services most likely till late fall, early winter, just to be really clear.
I guess my addition would be to make sure that there's multilingual support for the, for the program at the high school, the multilingual program at the high school. Because I know it's been a concern of the staff there, specifically the multilingual mental health circles. And those were funded before by the City of Berkeley. So somewhere in that stakeholder group, there's expand mental health support. But somewhere if we could acknowledge the unique needs of the students in the multilingual program.
The next week, we're supposed to be bringing a mental health update to the board with Dr. Shelley and with our partners from City of Berkeley. And that would be a great, great time to bring that to their attention as a, either a recommendation or a need. I think that that would be the best venue for that.
Director Sinai?
So I'm a little confused because I think this, is this a two, two-year grant?
Four-year.
So it's in ongoing because it's four years?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And this is in the, it, I know it says general fund at the top because I froze the top column. But this is in the second section, which is other funds. It's a little confusing on the screen. Sorry about that.
So President Brown may I make a recommendation?
Yes, you, you may. Director Sinai, I saw that your hand was still up. Was that from the last timer? Okay.
So Ruben, can you scroll down a little? So the general fund, if we want to look at the general fund investments ongoing one and one time for this year and next year, those are the totals and we've shared the details with you. President Brown, do you think we should get a vote on that separately from the other priorities using other funds?
Yes, if there, yes, if there aren't any more questions in regards to the general fund investments, then we can definitely take action on that. Are there any other questions, comments or concerns? Vice President Babbitt, I see you're muted.
No, I was ready to make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Well, I just want to clarify that the motion is to improve all of the categories for the superintendent and staff recommendations. So even if it's one, two or three, we're, we're approving the entire general fund budget priority list. That's my motion. Thank you.
Is it the whole priority list? Because the bottom line has specific other funding sources. It's not all general fund.
The general fund. The general fund.
Just the tops.
And the six eighty-one for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three is what I'm.
I'll second it.
Okay, Ms. Bardios, can you please call the roll?
Yes, I can. Director, uh, Sinai?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Vice President Babbitt?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your recommendation.
Ready? So, um, so this. Ruben's freezing frame. So this is the other funding, um. For twenty-two, twenty-three, using various sources identified. Um, so in terms of the, there's, this is a longer list. So um, did we have any questions? Um, oh. Okay, did we have any questions um, on this particular? Um, list? And can you just scroll through Ruben so they can see?
I I think we're all good. We had last week to bring up questions or concerns, so I I'm happy to move this list.
I'll second it.
Ms. Bardios, can you call the roll, please?
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Vice President Babbitt?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes.
So thank you again. Um, so at this point in the presentation, I'd actually like to go back to the slide that. Ruben. Um, and let's go to the next slide because we have a lot of discussion around the one-time block grant. So uh, we received Alameda County's um, common message, which districts rely on in terms of. Implementing various, the government's um, may revise. And the guidance that we received from ACO, ACOE and the common message. Is that we can include the revenue in our budget. But that we should not budget expenses um, you for this one-time block grant. And um, if if we even include it in sa- in Saks in our accounting. We have to designate it, so it won't have expenses set against it. But we should identify it as additional funding. To be determined or whatever, um, from the governor. Because there's a lot of um, inconsistency in ideas between the legislature and the governor. And in past years, we've never had such a wide um, diversion. The governor obviously wants to give us, there is extra money, so that's the first thing we should identify. But the governor wants to actually include it as a one-time block grant. And the legislature is thinking of increasing the poll or other options. So start, so at this point, we don't, we don't know how much the additional funding is gonna be. And we will know that when the state adopts their budget um, by June thirtieth. And at that time, the the district would do uh, fortify the revised. To incorporate what was actually enacted in the budget or voted on. So if you scroll down, um. You scroll down a little bit, Ruben. Um, so um, we also discussed this out, this um. List with Sback, and I know there was a comment that said the other, we did not share this with other um. It other um, committees. And um, we actually met with Sback and went through this list because they had already received the information. About the governor's budget, but. Um, just want to reiterate that this funding. Is not guaranteed. It will, we don't, we don't know how much it's really gonna be, and we don't know. Um, what format it's gonna take. So we will include um, a placeholder of thirteen million dollars as revenue in the budget, but designated. And I want to share with you Sback, we did get Sback's feedback, and I hope to also solicit. Feedback from the board tonight. So um, the PNO, um, we have, um, I think we have two members of the PNO in Sback and. They wanted on record. To say that they're asking for revisions to the teacher template. To consider changes that were made from twenty nineteen. So that would include buying down um, the, the, the general funds portion. Um, it's now at thirty-six to one, they wanted to revert it to thirty-four to one, as well as additional staffing that has um. That we've actually um, incurred. Um, in the previous slide, we had two fields highlighted that included staffing. So um, there was concern raised about us using this one-time funding. For staffing, even if it's spread over several years, that funding will end. And usually we do not do staffing, but that was one of the recommendations that um. That I will actually share with you. Um, I did, um, when we look at the, the um. The the. Tab for the one-time discretionary grant. There was also a comment to ensure that um, there's adequate funding for board priorities, including the EL Master Plan. Latinx and Black Lives Matter. Um, so if there's not enough funding for these programs. In the budget priorities that we just voted on, this one-time funding, the one-time block grant should be used to supplement these programs. And there was also a request from um, our BSEP music director. Who wants to um, to reconsider the way that we actually um. Get contributions from BSEP for the music program. So um, so that was the feedback that um. That the Sback wanted me to share with the board and to make sure the board heard their. Their um, what they were thinking. And then on the next slide, you can see, um, we're gonna be. Bringing this back um, in the form of a preliminary budget and the public hearing on LCAP. Um, and our budget, June twenty-ninth, we will be adopting. Um, the LCAP and the budget, and of course, a may revise, um, will be forty-five days after the state budget is approved. So um, so the next step would be um. Uh, um, next week, we'll be bringing back a budget with the with the with the priorities and the. And the reductions included um, in the budget. Um, Director Vasudev has a question.
No, are we ready for discussion, Pauline, or?
So I'll share this list with you that um, that. Uh, everybody has already seen, I've already shared S- Sback's comment. So do we have any particular item here? Where staff would like to add or comment on or in the ten minutes that we have left? Um. Yes, Ruben?
Well, assistant, it's just important to note that the this one-time block grant. Is essentially, we have the ability to spread it out over three years. That, right, that that's why we're showing potentially three years worth of funding here for these items.
Right, and that's based on the governor's budget, but because it's uncertain, we, and this information, I have not. Actually even done it vetted, uh, it was mentioned, and that was the assumption that staff took. But we will find out more when the budget is actually enacted, so.
The board seen this list, that's the sort of the staff recommendation, okay, great.
They have, um, let me see, if you scroll down somewhere, I think something was. Is there a big square somewhere? Okay, I'm looking, seeing this on the.
Yes, we're seeing the square. I think it's just the panel, so if you move it over to the side and minimize it, it'll be fine.
Is that better?
Yeah. So um, can we um, go over? So we added, um, I think we added a few items here, um. The um, expanding the district RTI TSA from point eight to one point oh FTE was added.
Yay, was.
Coordinator was added. So these are just recommendations that we have um, for using. Whatever format the additional funding will be um, given to school districts. Um, but this is what I was mentioning in row thirty and in row thirty-two. Um, the those two recommendations actually have staffing. In it, and um, usually we wouldn't do that for one-time funding. So. Alright, so um, I think Director Vasudev has a. Question?
Yeah, I just have like a comment on this. Um, so yesterday was the first time this was presented to Sback and D-LAC never saw these. These numbers. I just want the board to understand that, that D-LAC never saw this. And so for me, um, it's, I see some glaring omissions here in terms of student support. First, I think that it's really important that we expand support for our ELS, particularly for our LTL support for a lot, you know. Our students that we haven't been able to reclassify, duly duly identified students that are both like sped and EL. Um, that we expand support for the implementation of the master plan for those students because they're called out in the Latinx resolution as a priority. And just to fund for one year, we know that we need to implement this plan for multiple years, the whole investment going into the master plan, so. I'd like to see um, row eleven expanded for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four and also twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. And I don't, and this was brought up yesterday. Um, at Sback. That the, you know, the block grant is not representing the priorities from the board, including targeted interventions for Latinx students. I also don't see that called out anywhere here, so I'd like. Um, to see if staff could come back to the board with some thinking around targeted interventions for Latinx students. Like maybe something like a hundred K or whatever you guys think is appropriate, but targeted interventions for Latinx students moving forward. And um, also the, you know, in the D-LAC, in the limited D-LAC discussion that there was about the budget. As a priority for D-LAC, I know that the, that the committee had to mention interpretation. So when I see a translation budget for thirty-five thousand dollars, that's not enough to actually interpret IEP meetings. Or, you know, critical meetings where our community actually needs to actively engage, like that doesn't ensure language accessibility for our families. Particularly our English language learners, and so some kind of budget for interpretation, especially for key. Um, district meetings would be great. So I just don't think thirty-five thousand dollars is enough per year. The three things, um, you know, expanding row eleven, interpretation, and also I don't see any targeted interventions for a lot of next students here.
Okay, you can make a note of that. Thank you, Director Vasudev.
Um, I would like to add expanding um, Super Science Saturday. I'm not quite sure if we, in that next, that three hundred K of LCAP. If we could put Super Science Saturday back in our um. LCAP plan for next year. Because we do know that we got an additional three hundred K for our um, prioritized peoples. And so I'm not sure where we have decided what we're gonna use for that, but I think that would be a perfect place to. Add um, inter- interventions for Latinx families as well as um. Super Science Saturday, because that gives us that um, security of. Doing what LCAP is supposed to do with new and increased services for our targeted students. Go ahead, Doctor, I mean, super, whatever your name is, Aurelio.
I can't see you all because I minimized the screen, so sorry. But I, is row twenty-seven the established STEM intervention program for target students? I'm wondering if that is Super Sa- Saturday.
Yeah, I believe it is. That's what Superintendent Stevens had told me.
Well, in the past, it was fifty-five thousand, so I don't know how we're gonna do it for less, given inflation, so.
I'm all for increasing it, Vice President.
That's not realistic.
Okay, I put it up there for that.
Director Sinai?
So um, I'll first say that the addition, so I I support all of what's been said so far and what I would suggest. And we mentioned this last week is to reduce the, again. Assuming we've got the flexibility to do this, um, that we reduce the amount of money we pay back fund. Um, twenty. So that's the resource I would suggest we use for the additions that people are talking about. And, you know, if we reduce it by a million or by one point five, you know, that's where I think we could pull the resource from. Um, I think it's really valuable to repay fund fifty, but I think we can repay it at. A a a lower amount. And so in addition to supporting what Director Vasudev and Vice President. Uh, Babbitt said, I'd like to add two additional things that we talked about last week. One is adding the teachers, I'm not messing with the template. But adding the teachers back to the schools where the K four classrooms exceeded twenty-six or. Hit twenty-five or twenty-six students, and I think it's Malcolm, TO. Um.
Sylvia Mendez.
Thank you, Sylvia Mendez. It's getting late, I'm forgetting. You know the five schools.
Director Sinai, that's row forty, I just highlighted it at five hundred thousand, that that would reverse the reduction of elementary classes.
So I suggest that we highlight that one, and then that we also. Uh, bring over from the cuts that we did. Um, one-time only funding for the K five virtual academy. Um, for one year, um, to serve those families that are are vulnerable to um, COVID. Given that COVID, I see it as uh, an ongoing support for one-time COVID relief. Hmm. Um. And I know that the the request was for five hundred thousand, I I I really don't wanna lose the K five academy. Um, and we do have independent study, understanding there's some. Challenges with the virtual part, so my suggestion is actually that be three hundred.
For three, okay. Thanks, Ruben.
Thank you.
Vice President Babbitt?
Um, can I also ask that we um, expand middle school Ophi to one full-time per middle school? And I just, yeah.
So it would be an expansion at Willard and King to one time, so uh, it'd be a one point oh addition, I think, correct?
Two full times, but yes, one at each school.
Right.
Is what we actually asked for in prior years, but somehow you guys did something different, so.
I'm, I'm not gonna raise my hand, I'm just gonna call um, myself Assistant Superintendent Follinsby. Um, but under mental health uh, services for. Students, or it may not fall under uh, mental health services. Um, but ser- under services for students, uh, if we could add the addition of um. A RJ coordinator um, at the high school. I don't know if it would be good to fall, uh, fall right under there, um, but in spending a considerable amount of time. Um, at the high school these last couple of days, I've learned that there is only one RJ coordinator. Um, and we have been seeing, you know, additional events that have been happening um, that are in need of restorative justice support. Um, and so that is the recommendation that I would make. In terms of the virtual academy, I don't know if you would uh, accept this friendly amendment. Um, well, it is in motion, but I don't know if you would accept this amendment, uh, Director Sinai. Um, to the virtual academy, but if we have the capacity to fund it um, at five hundred thousand. Uh, I would make that that recommendation rather than do three hundred thousand.
Yeah, sure. I mean, we're not voting on it right now, I think.
True, yes, we aren't gonna vote on it.
Into what we um, reduce as the the payback.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's nine thirty-one, so.
Sorry, in addition to that, I did just wanna um, highlight um, Director Vasudev's recommendations as well as um, Director. Babbitt's recommendations in full support of those. Okay. Um, are there any other questions or any other um, additions to um, to this information? And I think it would be helpful uh, when we come back together, um, again to talk about this, to ensure that we um. Have or highlight a portion for the D-LAC comments um, here as, as the, as the second pack are listed, okay? Thank you so much, brother.
Didn't talk about that list either. It just wasn't ready.
It it wasn't ready in time, so for the pack and and D-LAC, I see Director Vasudev, thank you for raising your hand.
Thanks, President Brown. Does a quick point of clarification for Assistant Superintendent Follinsby? I know that you mentioned this yesterday at Sback, but um, kind of what's left over from the thirteen million, I think you said nine hundred thousand, I don't remember like the amount that you.
It was eight hundred, yeah, nine, eight hundred thousand from, yeah.
And so it would be good to know with the suggestion that Director Sinai is making, like what, if those, those two together, what they could fund next time this comes to the board would be helpful.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
All right.
So I think it's, do we have, is that, is nine thirty-two?
It is nine thirty, but I think we've reached the end of our discussion on that. So we took care of our action, our two action items. And we had the opportunity to talk about the next steps for the one-time block grant. So we took care of all of the business on that item. Thank you, Associate Superintendent Fallinsby. You can breathe for a couple of days at least. Thank you so much for helping us get through some of the challenges of that, but for helping us to get through that together, as well as, this is a perfect time to appreciate our committees who offered comments tonight, but who also offered comments during this entire process. Thank you for coming out night after night to those meetings, to the Sback PAC, D-LAC meetings and so on and so forth, and providing us with the guidance that we need to make the decisions here on the DIA. So thank you, thank you for that. All right, our meeting is over, but we, we still have business to take care of. So we'll move to the second opportunity for public comment. Seeing them, we'll move to Board Director's second opportunity for public comments, and I do have one. And my comment is that I hope you all have an incredible evening. Thank you. Good night.
Night, everybody.